For a written transcript of this meeting, or if you need reasonable accommodations, including this communication in an alternative format due to disability, please contact the Clerk to the Commission's office at 404-612-8232.
Testing, testing.
Is this right?
No, thank you.
Is this right?
All right, who's who? All right, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the irregularly scheduled meeting of the Fulton County Board of Commissioners. Today is January 10th, it is 10:02 a.m. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chairman Rob Pitts.
Present.
Commissioner Bridget Thorn.
Present.
Vice Chairman Bob Ellis. Commissioner Dana Barrett.
Present.
Commissioner Natalie Hall. Commissioner Marvin Arrington Jr.
Present.
Commissioner Kadija Abdul-Rahman.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty and gracious God, we are so grateful for this day, for a new year that you've allowed us to see. We thank you for all the grace and mercy you have bestowed upon our lives. We bless now these, your children, who are gathered in this meeting. Continue now, Lord, to lay your hands upon our leaders, give them your direction, your power and your strength. It is in your name that we humbly pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and the God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, continue, Madam Clerk.
On page two, Consent Agenda. Twenty-four, zero, 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 one, Adoption of the Consent Agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered routine by the County Commission and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion will take place on these items. If discussion of any consent agenda item is desired, the item will be moved to the regular meeting agenda for separate consideration. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we have one item to be removed from today's consent agenda as requested by Commissioner Abdul-Rahman. On page two, twenty-three, zero, 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 three. Housing Authority of Fulton County. Commissioner Abdul-Rahman is removing her appointment of Ernestine Pittman to replace Ronnie Shakir for district appointment.
As being removed? Held or removed? Held.
Held, okay, and removed from today's consent agenda.
All right, anything else? Commissioners, anything else? All right, I'll entertain a motion to...
I'm sorry, excuse me. I am requesting that the Atlanta Business League Appreciation Day proclamation be removed. It should have been requested.
What page is that on?
Page five.
Let it be... Oh, okay. All right. All right, a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. Is there a motion? All right, is there... All right, a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended by Commissioner Thorn, seconded by Commissioner Hall. Please vote, or actually, raise your hand. It's approved. Five yeas, five nays. Continue.
On page four, Regular Meeting Agenda. Adoption of the... Twenty-four, zero, 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 eight, Adoption of the Regular Meeting Agenda. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we have amendments to today's regular meeting agenda. On page eleven, twenty-four, zero, zero, one, one, Presentation of Proclamations and Certificates. Commissioner Hall has requested to remove the Atlanta Business League Appreciation Day proclamation, and we have a proclamation to be added recognizing Randy Marshall Appreciation Day. And on page six...
Hold it, hold it. Go ahead. On page six.
Page six, we're removing an item. Twenty-four, zero, zero, one, five, Public Works. Request approval of the Lord's Responsible Theater to provide small water meter installation services.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Abdul-Rahman?
Chairman, with all due respect, I ask if the proclamation honoring Marty Turpo be moved to the beginning. We do have members of Development Fulton that need to get to another meeting, and so if it's okay with the colleagues, if we can take that proclamation first, I would really appreciate it.
First among the proclamations? Excuse me, you mean, first among...
Yes, please.
Okay. Now, is this working now, or not?
It should be, yes.
All right, you have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Motion to approve by Commissioner Natalie Hall, seconded by Commissioner Dana Barrett. Let's vote, please.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays. Twenty-four, zero, 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 nine, Appointment of the Vice Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Thorn. This is what we do at the first meeting of each year. Commissioner Thorn?
I just want to say that Vice Chairman Ellis has done a great job being our vice chair, and it's unfortunate that he can't stay on for two years. And Commissioner Barrett and I, we need to be on at least two years before we could be vice chairs, so therefore I'm nominating Commissioner Abdul-Rahman to be the new vice chair to replace Ellis.
All right, is there a second for that? All right, I'll second. Other nominations? Any other nominations? Does that work?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Marvin Arrington Jr.
All right.
I thought that this, that we had a resolution that said that we were going by seniority, and that we simply added that you had to be on the Board of Commissioners for two years before you could do this. So I will go ahead and nominate Commissioner Arrington because based on the original resolution, he would have been the next person in line based on seniority.
Okay, is there a second? All right, properly moved and seconded.
Second. Point of order, Mr. Chair. I think we need to know what the resolution says and is there seniority. So I guess we need to ask the county attorney that.
Is the question whether the resolution includes qualifications?
Yes, specifically seniority as a qualification.
Seniority, okay. I got it. The ordinance says that the vice chair must have served at least two years on the board. Is that the question?
No, we amended the... A couple of years ago. Before it rotated and we made a change a couple of years ago, and we take nominations and we vote, period. All right, we have two names. Commissioner Abdul-Rahman and Commissioner Arrington. Commissioner Thorn, you want to be heard?
I'm sorry, what was the answer to the question about seniority being included?
I see. Yes, it says, whereas in accordance with current policy adopted on January 24th, Fulton Code Section 101-36B allows the board to select vice chairman...
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
...allows the board to select the vice chairman amongst all the members based on members' seniority, dependent on their prior and current service in that capacity.
Thank you. So the answer is yes. Seniority is included.
All right, two names before us. First name, properly moved and seconded, is Commissioner Abdul-Rahman. Second name, Commissioner Marvin Arrington, properly moved and seconded.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
If the resolution goes by seniority, then... What... Either seniority is a requirement or not, and if the next most senior person... I don't believe that there is a question as to who the most next senior person is. And so that would mean that only that person would qualify. So I need to, I guess we need more direction and a better answer from our county attorney because Commissioner Hall had to answer the question.
Anita.
Is seniority a requirement or not? And what specifically are the rules?
No, not really. Listen, we made a change a couple of years ago on this, and we take names at the first meeting. Before it rotated, we made a change, and we take a vote, and whoever gets the most votes is the vice chair, period.
I'm in the queue.
Well, you can be in the queue, fine. What do you have... That's what we decided. Now, Commissioner Hall, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have resolutions, policies and procedures for a reason, do we not, Madam County Attorney?
Yes, they should be based upon rationale, yes.
They should be based on what?
I mean, I'm assuming that's a rhetorical question. Yes, they are there for a reason.
My question is simply a question. Shall I read the ordinance that... Okay, well, I'll just read it because we seem to be having some confusion here. Ordinance amending Section 101-36B of the Fulton County Code relating to the selection process for the vice chairman of the Fulton County Board of Commissioners. Whereas the Board of Commissioners Board desires to adopt the former policy of the Fulton County Code 101-36B, which required an election by four affirmative votes for its vice chairman's position from amongst all members. And whereas, in accordance to the current policy adopted on January 24th, 2018, Fulton County Code 101-36B allows the board to select its vice chairman amongst all members based on members' seniority, dependent on their prior and current service in that capacity, and now therefore be it ordained by the Board of Commissioners of Fulton County, Georgia, that Fulton County Code 101-36B shall be amended to read as follows. The Board of Commissioners by four affirmative votes shall elect the vice chairman at the first regular meeting held in January, and the vice chairman so elected shall be authorized to preside at meetings of the Board of Commissioners in the absence of the chairman and fulfill all the duties of the chairman due to the death or vacancy of the chairman. No board member shall serve as vice chairman until the member has served at least two years on the board. Be it further ordained that any ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed so passed and adopted this 20th day of October, 2021.
So I believe your question was, is the seniority language in this ordinance mandatory, as in people must be taken in sequence based on their precise states of seniority? The language of the ordinance indicates that seniority is a consideration. It does not have mandatory sequence language, and so I would interpret this to mean that it is definitely a consideration, but it does not mandate that it be taken in sequence.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Well, it has been... I'm sorry, I'm still in the queue.
You have the floor, Commissioner, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
You finished?
It has been the procedure of this board to always go in sequence of seniority, and we always continue how we have always done in the past. So in the past, we have always selected based on seniority.
Anything else, Commissioner Arrington?
No, sir, not at this time.
Okay. You have two. Commissioner Abdul-Rahman was recommended by, nominated rather, by Commissioner Thorn, and I second. Let's vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, we're on the substitute motion by Commissioner Hall.
Substitute motion to do what?
Commissioner Abdul-Rahman, that's the one. We can't go back until we dispose of this one.
Okay. All right, on the substitute motion by Commissioner Hall, nominating Commissioner Arrington, seconded by Commissioner Arrington. Let's vote, please.
And the vote is open. And the motion fails, two yeas, three abstentions.
All right, back to Commissioner Abdul-Rahman.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, four yeas, one nay, one abstention.
Next item.
Twenty-four, zero, zero, one, zero, Ratification of Minutes. Regular meeting minutes, December 6th. Recess meeting post-agenda minutes, December 20th, 2023.
So motion to approve. Motion to approve by Commissioner Natalie Hall, seconded by Commissioner Thorn. Let's vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays.
Continue.
On page five, twenty-four, zero, zero, one, one, Presentation of Proclamations and Certificates.
All right, how many do we have now?
We have five.
Five. All right, we have 30 minutes of proclamation, it's 10:20.
The first proclamation is recognizing Michelle Marty Turpo, the fourth Remembrance Day, sponsored by Commissioner Abdul-Rahman, co-sponsored by Commissioner Arrington with full board support.
Hello, okay. Will all of the family, please, come forward of Marty Turpo? And if the Development Fulton Authority, if you would join us, and any other family and supporters? Any other Development Fulton employees, board members, executive director, all of the above? Can you all fall in on both sides, please? It is with great honor and respect that Fulton County recognizes Marty Turpo. This is sponsored by me and my colleague, Commissioner Arrington Jr., Marvin Arrington Jr., with full board support. We do have a video that we would like to show, a quick clip. This is what we call a son of the South, southwest Atlanta. And so we want to make sure that all of Fulton County and those that are watching understand why it's so important that we recognize not only this family, but this great citizen of Fulton County that passed way earlier than any of us anticipated. So can we please get the video to play? Now, I know our Netflix subscription is paid up, so what is the problem, you all? Because you know the chairman's going to be on me in a minute. Do we have the video?
Yes, we got it.
Please play it.
Moment, just a moment.
You want me to go ahead, Chairman? Okay. Okay, all right, well, I'll go ahead with the proclamation, and if it's still working, we'll put it at the end. This is a proclamation, um, honoring the work that Marty Turpo, uh, has done. This is, uh, actual legislation. You can Google this a hundred years from now, and it'll still come up. I take special pride in being a co-sponsor because uh, this man and his wife have been mentors and pillars in our community. And to give of themselves and to give of their son. Um, Marty, I consider a friend of mine, a confidant of mine. We didn't always agree, but one thing about it, he know how to make me laugh. And so it is with great honor that whereas Michelle Marty Turpo, and is that the fourth or fifth, you all? I can't see. The fourth, okay, was a native Atlanta, of Atlanta, and a graduate of Frederick Douglass High School, Morehouse College, bachelor's degree, and Clark Atlanta University, his master's degree. Michelle complete, completed a graduate internship at the Bank of N.M. Rothschild in London, England, in foreign currency and bond portfolio analysis. And whereas Marty was the principal of the Aaron Group Incorporated, started in nineteen ninety-one by Hank Aaron and Marty's father, uh, Aaron Turpo Senior. He was also the chair of the Development Authority of Fulton County, appointed by District Five Commissioner Marvin Arrington Jr., where he influenced the authority to adopt meaningful and inclusionary provisions as a part of the awards process. And whereas Marty was a successful entrepreneur with projects in product licensing, airport news and gift concessions, airport staffing operations, in coun- in-country international business development, and municipal parking infrastructure rehabilitation. He was also a community leader with an in-depth ba- background in diversity, equity, and inclusion, to opening businesses, opportunity to women-owned businesses and minority businesses. And whereas Marty was a member of many organizations, including the Georgia Economic Development Association, Council for Quality Growth, and Georgia Minority Supplier Development Council. And whereas Marty served on several other boards, including the National Forum of Black Public Administrators, National Corporate Pass Council Chair, the Joint Development Authority of Metro Atlanta, Treasury Secretary Fulton Technology and Energy Authority, Atlanta Metro Chamber Board of Advisors, the Georgia Chamber, and Atlanta, uh, Aerotropolis. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners recognizes Michelle Marty Turpo for a life, a very full life, of integrity and dedication to the cities, uh, city of Atlanta, Fulton County, and beyond. And does hereby proclaim Friday, January 5th, 2024, as Michelle Marty Turpo, the Fourth Remembrance Day in Fulton County, Georgia. Would you please put your hands together? I am going to turn the mic over to my colleague, Commissioner Marvin Arrington, who appointed him.
Good morning. It is, uh, my sincere honor and distinct pleasure to, uh, for us to present this proclamation to Marty's family today. Um, you know, he was all of that stuff for the Development Authority, but more than that, he was my friend. And, uh, both graduates from Frederick Douglass High School, both attended Cascade United Methodist Church. Um, so glad that his brother and mom and dad and his partner Karen are here, and, uh, others, uh, his son Mickey back here. Come on up here, man. Uh, you know, uh, Marty was truly special, and, uh, he will surely be missed, but we are better because he was here. Uh, and so we are thankful for that. And, uh, we will continue to ask you to say blessings for his family and friends. Thank you so much.
We're gonna let the, uh, it's rolling now, thank you.
Hi, I'm Michelle Turpo. I chair the Development Authority of Fulton County. Um, that is what I do. Develop Fulton. First came to fruition, I was five years old, okay, so I wasn't around. But I will say that the Development Authority and myself were both born on May 16th, so I'm, I gotta get that out there. I would describe Fulton County as the best place to live in the United States of America versus Texas. Texas is in the United States. I love Texas, but Georgia comes first, and so I want those businesses to be here.
Are you sure you want that out there? You sing Texas.
I said they were great. Look at me.
Thank you all. We're gonna take a few moments for the family to speak. You wanna come up?
We're shy.
I want to say thank you for all the support that we've received from Fulton County and friends, uh, going through these rough times. Nobody expected it to happen. And obviously Marty, with all those things he was doing, when she read those boards and stuff that he's actively involved in, I said, damn. No wonder I didn't see him. But he, he loved it, and he got joy out of doing things for the community and helping who he can help. Uh, we're proud to have raised such a son and such a man as he. She can't say it without crying, so she won't say it.
Uh, thank you, Board of Commissioners, for honoring my brother, Michelle Marty Turpo. Uh, he really, he grew up here in Atlanta, he loved Atlanta. He gave back to the community, he was passionate about it, he was very passionate about his, uh, working with Develop Fulton. Uh, it would be conversations, he was just always on his mind. And so he was very dedicated, uh, to serving the community. And we just want to say thank you to each of you. Thank you all for keeping his spirit alive in such a meaningful way. Thank you, um, Commissioners, and we really appreciate you all, too.
Hi there, um, I'm Marty's son. I just want to thank everybody for, I don't know, this is cool. I, hard to think of words right now. Um, my dad gave back all he could to the community whenever he could, uh, and, uh, he was just awesome, so, thank you.
The next proclamation is recognizing Lieutenant Colonel Mike Russell Appreciation Day, sponsored by Commissioner Thorne.
Hey there. Hey there, good to see you, good to see you. Is this on? This is amazing. This is, I love everybody coming down here to stand with Mike Russell. She was your picture taker. Wow, it gives me great honor. Uh, when I started my journey in political life, uh, I met Mike. He's truly an amazing person, and I am so blessed to call him my friend and a mentor as well. Uh, he is so active in the community, trying to help, help his neighbors. He is truly a friend that you want to have, and he is a friend for all. And I knew he was a veteran, but I didn't know he was a hero. It just, the more and more you get to know him, the more and more you're just fascinated with this man, so I was thrilled when, um, and I want to thank John Ossoff's, Senator John Ossoff's office for procuring this medal that was presented to him in December in Washington, D.C. So I just wanted the Fulton County residents to have their chance to also honor this great man. Whereas on Saturday, December 9th, 2023, retired Army Lieutenant Colonel Mike Russell was honored with a Bronze Star with V device for his terrorism during the nineteen eighty-nine United States Operation Just Cause in Panama. And whereas Lieutenant Russell's unit came under an intense sniper and light machine gunfire when he led a strike team to storm the enemy. When he and his team were under fire, Lieutenant Russell moved forward and eliminated en- enemy forces, attempting to return to his unit. Lieutenant Russell was pinned down by another shooter when he shot up a streetlight and directed two M60 machine guns to engage the enemy position, eliminating it. And whereas Lieutenant Russell served as a military police officer for twenty-eight years before his retirement. During his service in the Army, he traveled to twenty-six countries, served in the United States, Central America, the Caribbean, the Middle East, and Europe, and was deplo- deployed overseas on eight major missions, six in combat. And whereas Lieutenant Russell graduated from Campbell University in North Carolina as a distinguished military graduate and received his commission as a second lieutenant in the United States Army, where he was assigned to the Military Police Corps. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners and all associated with the United States Army and the one hundred and eighth Military Police Company recognized Lieutenant Mike Russell for his valorous actions and dedicated service to his country and does hereby proclaim Wednesday, January 10th, 2024, as Lieutenant Colonel Mike Russell Appreciation Day in Fulton County, Georgia. Thank you, thank you. Want to say a few words?
Yeah, I guess. Does anybody want to say anything? Well, we'd be a pearl day. I'm very humbled to get this. I'm standing here in spite of myself today. There were a lot of people who made it possible for me to be here, starting with my parents and my maternal grandmother, my family, uh, my two children and their mother, who suffered a great deal during all those deployments. Uh, a lot of crusty old NCOs who kept me safe and kept me straight. And, um, there's one person I want to mention today. I could go on, there's, there's so many people who've helped me over those twenty-eight plus years, but there's one in particular. On the day that this happened, we were in downtown Panama City, and I was the company commander of the one oh eighth MP Company, that's why it was in the proclamation. And we were taking sniper fire and machine gun fire. And, uh, I decided I was gonna go across the street and take these guys out. And one soldier followed me. Well, after it got a little hot, he got smart, and he went back. So I was stuck out there by myself. And I wasn't thinking, I was just upset that these guys were trying to kill my soldiers. So I went forward, and I, I did what I had to do, and on the way back, like she said, this guy from, from above in a tall building started shooting down at me. And Sergeant Major, I hope he didn't get a sniper's badge, because if he did, he was the worst sniper in the world. I'm six-four, and he couldn't hit me. And he had me pinned down under an eve under their door. And about that time, I realized I had made a mistake about crossing that street. And the first sergeant, I can still hear his voice yell out, "Sir, what in the F are you doing outside the perimeter? You're the commander, you're supposed to be inside the perimeter." And I, "Yeah, that's right," and I said, "Well, First Sergeant, I figured that part out, now help me get back across the street." So he says, "Shoot out that light, and we'll get you back across the street." So we did, and as I was running back across the street, I stumbled, lost my balance, cut up my left hand and my knee. And so I got over there, and we directed machine guns, we took them out. And he wasn't happy with me. And he let me know it. And he's, he thought what I did was foolish, because he said, you know, you're the commander, you should have been there, uh, to lead and not to do what you did, but it was just about caring for the guys. So I just want to say thank you to First Sergeant Fawcett. He's no longer with us, he passed away two years ago of cancer. And, um, him and all the other great NCOs and officers that mentored me, and literally, if it hadn't been for him, I would not be standing here today. So thank you all very much, and thank you, Commissioner Thorne, and Edward, and all of you guys, and again, also to Senator Ossoff's office. And finally, to, uh, Major General Thigpen, who's the commander of, uh, US Army South and the Sixth Army, who pushed this award, not only for me, but for other soldiers. There are seven of us. Four of us got our awards, three we're still looking for, I hope we can find them, so they can get their awards as well. But General Thigpen pushed this thing all the way to the Secretary of the Army in record time to make sure that these awards were approved and presented. So thank you to everybody, and thank you again, Commissioner Thorne and all the Commissioners. Thank you.
The next proclamation is recognizing Digital Equity Day, sponsored by Commissioner Barrett.
I'm blind, so. I am getting ready to present a proclamation in support of digital equity in Fulton County, so I have joining me up here, Dr. Gail Hollis. Gail Hallman from the libraries. If there's anybody else here from the libraries or Select Fulton that's been working on digital equity, and of course, all of my good friends from InspireEDU are up here as well. I'm super proud to stand up here with all of you. These guys at InspireEDU have been a force for digital equity in our community for over 16 years. Last year alone, they served 2,825 qualifying families through 138 free workshops where they provided training and a free laptop. The work they do is critical not only to bridging the digital divide but to creating a more equitable Fulton County. Our library system as well has been committed to digital equity. Select Fulton has been committed to digital equity and I'm looking forward to working with all of them as we move into 2024 and continuing to move forward on this front. With that, I will read the proclamation. Whereas digital equity is a critical component in achieving equity in education, healthcare, and career opportunity. And whereas digital equity is achieved when all people have the hardware, software, skills, and connectivity to succeed. And whereas InspireEDU, a 501(c)(3) headquartered in Fulton County, works to bridge the digital divide by providing youth and adults with hardware, software, and training at no cost. And whereas each year InspireEDU partners with dozens of schools and community-based organizations, provides families with thousands of hours of hands-on training, fully loaded laptops, and technical support. And whereas in 2024, InspireEDU will celebrate its 16th year of operation in Fulton County and continues to grow and serve more citizens every year. And whereas InspireEDU is committed to raising awareness around the importance of digital equity. And whereas Fulton County is committed to working towards a digital equity for all of its citizens. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners recognizes InspireEDU for their continued dedication to improving lives and does hereby proclaim Wednesday, January 10th, 2024 as Digital Equity Day in Fulton County. And with that, I would like to ask InspireEDU's President, Richard Hicks, to say a couple of words.
Thank you Commissioner Barrett, distinguished commissioners. This is a great honor. I've been doing this work for over 15 years and I've seen crises that we've had within our community. And the transformation in technology in our basic digital life is starting to take shape in a more amplified way. It's woven into our finances and our education, telehealth. The pandemic, it didn't just bring it to light, it amplified the need that we got to get it right. Because if we're going to be evolving over the next few years, digital equity has to be something important. It is as basic as food now. And if we don't do that, then we're going to be left behind. And I'm proud to serve and I have a wonderful staff and friends and supporters that really believe in the work that we're doing. And we want to thank each and every one of you for your support in the community and helping to really build this sort of coalition that we can move this forward. So thank you all so much commissioners and we look forward to serving in years to come.
The next proclamation is recognizing Marvin Woolley Appreciation Day sponsored by Commissioner Hall.
All right, everyone here, in honor of Marvin Woolley, please come down. Judge Taylor, good to see you. Marvin, good to see you. Everyone here, in honor of Marvin Woolley, please come down. All right. Sierra, where are you going? So I first heard about Marvin Woolley because of his outstanding customer service, his heart for the people. I was told that he was being literally watched by this young lady, Ms. Dr. Sierra L., who is the manager of the well-known artist Dewan Hart, also known as Young Dro. Sierra is an advocate for people who are in that eviction cycle and she goes to the courts on a regular basis to assist. And Young Dro literally pays for people's evictions to resolve their issues and get them back into their homes, literally walking into the court and paying everything for them. And they observe that Marvin Woolley literally will help every single resident that comes into that court personally, taking them by the hand, taking them to the computer, explaining every document to them, helping them enter anything into the system and advising them. And it is just commendable. So it was my honor and pleasure to sponsor this proclamation for you. And it reads, whereas Marvin Woolley is an esteemed employee of the State Court of Fulton County and has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to providing exceptional customer service. And whereas Marvin consistently goes above and beyond his duty to ensure that every customer receives the highest level of satisfaction and his dedication, professionalism, and attention to detail have earned him a reputation for being an outstanding customer service representative. And whereas Marvin consistently exhibits a positive attitude and treats each customer with respect, empathy, and kindness, and his exceptional communication skills and ability to listen and understand customer needs have resulted in countless instances of successful problem resolution. And whereas Marvin's unwavering commitment to excellent customer service has contributed significantly to the overall positive experience of customers within the State Court of Fulton County. And whereas Marvin's consistent demonstration of outstanding customer service has set a standard of excellence that inspires and motivates his colleagues. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners recognizes Marvin Woolley for his exceptional customer service and his unwavering dedication to ensuring the highest level of satisfaction for every person he serves and does hereby proclaim Wednesday, January 10th, 2024 as Marvin Woolley Appreciation Day in Fulton County, Georgia. Congratulations and thank you for your service, exemplary service. And I just want to say, when we were working on this proclamation, my chief of staff and I noticed how Judge Taylor jumped right in to provide some language for this proclamation. He admires your exemplary service as well. And I will hand the mic over to whoever wants to speak next. I am not a speaker. But I want to say that eviction, being in a part of the eviction process, and it's not just the evictions part, but I have not only been just in the state court part, I've been in the magistrate court part and Superior Court. And I have never encountered in either courts or in society, a human being like you. I see people coming there upset and they hurt because they're going to be evicted. I see them bothered, I see them yell, I see them curse, I see them curse you out and you still say, "But ma'am, it's okay, we can do this." And it takes, I want to, I can't curse, but it takes a person of a certain stature to be able to handle those type of people. When people come in eviction court, they come because they need you, they need help. And sometimes people don't know how to because maybe they have not experienced that. And I don't know if you experienced it or not, but what I can say is that you treat everyone equally and you treat them as if you have experienced it and I completely appreciate it. So don't kick me out over there. Judge Taylor? Because you jumped right on that email.
I will. You say you're not a speaker, but golly, I don't want to follow that quite frankly. Because what I was going to say is the same thing. Folks come to the courthouse and they don't come here because they want to. Nobody comes here because they're happy. Everybody has an issue and everybody has a problem. But every time I have ever gone by the Self-Help Center and every time I've ever dealt with Marvin or ever heard of anybody who has ever worked with Marvin, he always has a smile. He always puts people at ease. And that is a skill that so few people have. I know I don't have it. And I commend you so much when dealing with all of that hurt and anguish and discord that people come into the courthouse with and you manage to deal with it with grace and with a smile. And thank you so much for all you do. Appreciate it.
Good morning, everyone. I just want to say that Marvin truly embodies the characteristics of a public servant. I've known Marvin now for about 15, maybe 20 years during his tenure working with State Court. And the recognition that he's receiving today is consistent with what we have seen over the years. There have been countless numbers of emails, phone calls, where someone just wanted to recognize him for the service that he's provided. As has been said, it doesn't matter from which walk of life someone may come from, but when they enter into the Self-Help Center, we know that they're going to receive true customer service from Marvin Woolley. So we are honored to have him as a member of the State Court family and as, not only just as an employee, but as a public servant. Thank you.
Wow, this is flattering. Good morning, everyone. Thank you Ms. Anderson for the recognition. Thank you Commissioner Hall for the nomination. And on behalf of Fulton County's leadership, CEO Dick Anderson, the rest of the commissioners, just Godspeed on the leadership you all provide to county. And for anyone else out there in the audience, whether you're a member of the public or another county employee that works in a different department, I just look forward to continuing to work alongside with you all, blending in, making Fulton County a great place to live, work, and play. And it's been an honor serving and alongside my State Court personnel, Honorable Chief Judge Wesley Taylor, Mr. Tally, Chief Clerk, Deputy Chief DeAndre Moore, my immediate head of Daeshu Battle. But again, it's been an honor serving and working with Ms. Anderson's nonprofit as well as the rest of the members of the public that we serve in the Self-Help Center and State Court. So thanks again for the honor, everyone, and Godspeed.
The last proclamation is recognizing Randy Marshall Appreciation Day sponsored by Commissioner Arrington.
All right. My pleasure to present this proclamation to Mr. Randy Marshall. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Randy Marshall is a native of Harlem, New York, and one half of the award-winning directing duo The Fat Cats. And whereas Randy is a graduate of Morehouse College in Atlanta, Georgia, where he was a theater and film major, after a few years of set work, he caught his first break directing a music video for legendary director Keith Ward and his company. And whereas Randy went on to direct a plethora of bass music videos and his impressive directorial client list includes legendary artists including LL Cool J, Lil Wayne, T.I., Ciara, CeeLo Green, Mary J. Blige, 50 Cent, P. Diddy, Young Jeezy, Jermaine Dupri, Fabulous, OutKast, Killer Mike, Kanye West, and Academy Award winners Jamie Foxx and 36 Mafia. And whereas The Fat Cats also won Best Video at the 2005 MTV Video Music Awards with Ludacris, the duo also has won various Dirty Awards, ozone awards, and received numerous BET Award nominations. And whereas The Fat Cats own and operate a production company based out of Tyler Perry Studios in Atlanta, the directors work with artists including Lil Baby, Megan Thee Stallion, Migos, Drake, Future, Gunna, Young Thug, and the City Girls, among many others. And whereas we are continuing to celebrate 50 years of hip-hop and arts and culture in Atlanta and Fulton County, now therefore be it resolved that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners in honor of the 50th anniversary of hip-hop recognizes Randy Marshall for his many contributions to the music and entertainment industry and to arts and culture in Atlanta and throughout Fulton County and does hereby proclaim Wednesday, January 10th, 2024 as Randy Marshall Appreciation Day in Fulton County, Georgia.
I'd just like to say, I believed in the city of Atlanta. I started way back 30 years ago directing videos and started as a set PA. But I watched the city grow and I knew there was something special. Instead of going to New York or back to New York or to LA, I stuck it out and, you know, with the help of Dr. Eichelberger over Clark Atlanta and just people who believed in me. Kim, I got to give a shout to Kim O'Yay, who I went and swept floors. Her husband was Eazy Lee, he was a DJ for the Treacherous Three. I'd went and swept floors and got coffee and just used to write treatments and I'd send them to record labels. To one point, the lady called and said, "You know, don't send us any more treatments. When we get something, we'll give you a video." And that happened and then one thing led to another and I was able to just watch the city grow and I thank all the artists that I've worked with that believed in what we wanted to do as visionaries and make it so, you know, when record labels and people thought about shooting videos, they would come to Atlanta. So I thank everybody who had, you know, anything to do with me being right here at this moment and having an appreciation day. Thank you.
All right, 11:02, Madam Clerk, continue.
On page five, Public Hearings 240012, Public Comment. Citizens wishing to participate in public comment will be allowed to appear in person or may choose to participate virtually via Zoom video conferencing or by submitting their comments in writing by registering on the county website. comments in writing by registering on the county website, www.fultoncountyga.gov. Priority for public comment will be given to Fulton County citizens and those individuals representing businesses or organizations located within Fulton County. Speakers will be granted up to two minutes each. The public will not be allowed to yield or donate time to other speakers. The public comment portion of the meeting will not exceed 30 minutes. In the event the 30-minute time limit is reached prior to public comments being completed, public comment will be suspended and the business portion of the BLC meeting will commence. Public comment will resume at the end of the meeting. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we'll start with the speakers here in Assembly Hall. We have received 27 speaker cards.
27?
27. Will the first five speakers please come forward? Judge Cassandra Kirk, Solicitor General Keith Gammidge, Jimmy Goff, Paul D. Hershey, and Michelle Taylor Willis.
All right, again, for the record, when you have 15 seconds remaining in your two minutes, I'll say 15 seconds, that's your key to begin to conclude your remarks. That applies to everyone except elected officials.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
What is it? 11:03, so we have 27 speakers. So we're obviously going to go beyond 30 minutes. That's allotted. So I'd ask you, you can limit your remarks. It would be most appreciated. Thank you. But again, this is not applied to elected officials. Judge, you have it for.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the Fulton County Board of Commissioners. As you continue your budget discussions for Fulton County, I ask that you remember the magistrate court of Fulton County, a court where since 2015, over 634,000 cases have been filed and as of December 25th, 2023, 593,000 have been closed. This is the busiest magistrate court in the state of Georgia. I am Cassandra Kirk. I serve as the chief magistrate judge of Fulton County and today I address you not just on behalf of the court, but on behalf of the people we all serve. I bring to your attention two critical issues before you. One, the recent decision to transfer funds from the magistrate court to the superior court. And two, the results of the assessment of the magistrate court of Fulton County, thanks to a grant we sought and won from the State Justice Institute. First, in our ongoing commitment to a collaborative justice, we met with the Superior Court on January 5th, 2024, and have drafted language for an MOU that we are both considering. This meeting was crucial to identify both of our operational needs and our goal remains to work in partnership, providing effective coverage and ensuring that our community's needs are met. Second, the recently completed comprehensive assessment of the court, a copy of the executive summary was provided to you all, reveals a significant understaffing issue in the magistrate court. This shortage is not merely an operational challenge, it directly affects the citizens we serve by causing longer wait times for justice and unresolved disputes. To effectively address this, it is imperative to fund 53 and one-half critical full-time positions. This action is not only vital for our court's efficiency, but also for ensuring that justice is timely and accessible for our citizens. A major concern highlighted in the assessment is the need to separate the magistrate clerk's office from the superior court clerk's office. Currently, this intertwined structure leads to reduced productivity and delayed case processing, affecting the timely delivery of justice to our community. Separating these offices, as seen in other courts across Georgia and even across Fulton County, will significantly improve our operational efficiency and service quality. Adequate funding for our magistrate court is essential for fulfilling our obligations to the citizens of our county. I urge you, members of the Board of Commission, to reconsider your decision. Restoring the funding to the magistrate court is a step toward ensuring efficient and fair justice. It's not just an investment in our court's infrastructure, it's a commitment to the welfare and rights of the people we serve. I'm available for any further discussion on how we can enhance our services and justice delivery in Fulton County. Thank you.
Good morning. I stopped in and Happy New Year again. Keith Gammidge, Fulton County Solicitor General, stopped in briefly to say thank you for the service that each of you provides and for your leadership, your juggling, all of these important weights that are on all of our shoulders. And I thought it appropriate to start the year off simply by saying thank you. And to the county manager and Ms. Whitmore, Mr. Adams and the whole team, along with the court officials, our law enforcement partners, everyone who leans in to deliver for our people who are counting on us, I just wanted to start by saying thank you. And to my team, who I hope is watching while they're working, I want to say thank you publicly to them and most importantly, to those that we serve together. I want to here publicly reiterate in this new year that I will continue, as I know each of you will, continue to give my full measure and my all in service. So thank you all. With that, I'll be excused.
Hi, thanks for having me. My name is Jimmy Goff. I'm the chairman of the Board of the Academy Theater in Hapeville, Georgia. I grew up in Atlanta, Atlanta native. So big change in the city, right? From two water fountains, from two bus stands, from two everything to one, all right? I see that as the product of the arts. I'm here to say, come on, people, arts are education. The thing that brought us to this point where we're even sitting together, black and white people and all kinds of people, is because the first fruits of emancipation historically started when black musicians brought the rest of the country into the game and starting in the 20th century. Jazz is what brought us, whoa. White people all of a sudden went, wow, what's going on here? What's happening with these people? They've got something to say. And once that got said, it could not be put back in the bottle. I grew up here, I saw the Beatles at Fulton County, I saw James Brown and Otis Redding endless times at the municipal auditorium, went to Grady High School. This is my city. Sat with friends of mine at Woolworths when they were pulling all those kids out. They said, what are you doing here? I said, I'm sitting with my friend. They said, well, you better get out of here. They were punching these other kids. Why didn't they punch me? White, 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 okay? All the private schools in this city, in this county, in this country have arts funding. They have good theaters, they have instruments, they have everything they need. The kids that need the stuff are in these Southwest schools, on these schools that were just, you know, getting, just like when I was a kid, secondhand books, secondhand desks.
15 seconds, sir.
So please, please support this, it's so important. Back in the day, Samuel L. Jackson and myself, we're going to Clark College to teach teachers to teach art, right? How do you teach math with arts? It can be done, we can learn all this with the arts. Please do it. Thank you.
Hi, Paul Hershey. Before you start the clock, I'd like to thank one of the commissioners. I guess you started the clock. Thank you, Bridget Thorn, for recognizing Mike. He's a hell of a soldier. True the vote, that challenge was taken up in the county and the truth of vote won their case. So what that means is anybody that's called an election denier is slander. Check it out. And you can become Giuliani's again if you don't do something about reinstating Jason Fraser into the Board of Election. You've got the county attorney and you've got a member of the commissioners that's an attorney. You've got a Board of Election chairman that says she doesn't have to follow the law. I've got that video, it was in a video meeting with Bridget Thorn and something ought to be done about it. And you do have the authorities to do something about it. Do it. The second thing is, is this, is why do you have two political operatives in the DA's office? Why did you have to go out and get a special prosecutor that has never prosecuted a felony, has violated the law, and there's no DA in the county? We've paid him $650,000. Now we've got three elected officials that have been playing hide the pepperoni with other people that they shouldn't be playing with. And the bottom line is, two of them are in the Justice Department and maybe that's why you've got a backup in the jail, because they're spending more time somewhere else than where they should be.
15 seconds.
And you commissioners have the right to go to the IG and ask for a special prosecutor and an audit of the DA's office. And number two, you never should have allowed her to hire the attorney at all.
Next five speakers, please come forward. Marissa Sutton, Brother Anthony Muhammad, Sheila Mance, Robbie Wyndham, and Donna Watts. None.
Thank you for your time, Chairman, Commissioners. All right, so about 24 years ago, I decided to have my own independent study of the correlation between arts and education for our children. And I took each of my four children, I played classical music for them in utero. From zero to three, I played classical music while they were sleeping and during the day. I started all of them in piano at the age of five. And they were all, to this day, they all play at least one instrument, most of them play two or three. They are significant thinkers and performers in math, science, reading, and reading comprehension. My 17-year-old is at one of the top private schools in the nation and he outperforms all of his cohorts in math and science and reading. So I have significant data on my own to prove that there is a direct correlation between arts, music, and our children and how they perform. We're 49th in the nation as a state. We're under health, we're under economic, we're undereducated, we're under arts. Why would we slash and take money from a budget that will make sure and ensure the progress, the education, the success, and the significance of our children and to continue to be last in a city where we're number one, in a county where we're number one in entertainment? It's an unorthodox, it's nonsensical. But our children really are the most important thing we have. Why would we take money
15 seconds.
out of their pockets as children and prevent them from being the best they can be when we know Georgia, Fulton County, and Atlanta is truly the best and everything else in the nation? Thank you.
Excuse me, ma'am. Please lower those signs. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Marissa Sutton. I'm the Associate Managing Director at Actors Express, a nonprofit theater located over on Atlanta's west side. Councilmembers, I'd like to thank you so much for your continued support of the arts in Fulton County. I'd also like to specifically thank our councilperson, Councilperson Abdurrahman, for everything that you and your staff do to make our council, or I'm sorry, our district a better place. Thanks to the expanded arts budget, we have been able to bounce back from the pandemic better and stronger than ever. We've been able to create partnerships throughout Fulton County, including with Oglethorpe University and Cool Girls of Atlanta, increasing our reach and being able to impact more and more lives with the arts. As you consider this budget, I would urge you to keep Fulton County arts funding alive. The arts are not just a nice to have for Fulton County, they are a critical economic pillar. In addition to the funds generated when patrons attend an event, we are employers of large swaths of Fulton County residents. In addition to our apprentice company that brings over 20 talented individuals to the county yearly, we also have patron service agents, administrators, artists, all being able to stay and maintain a life in Fulton County and generating tax opportunities in Fulton County. When many of the writers and actors went on strike, we were able to keep jobs in Fulton County because many of them worked at theaters during that downtime. Fulton County arts also bring in revenue to the county that would not otherwise be here. About a third of our attendees last year came from other counties and when they attended, three-quarters of them said they would not have otherwise come to Fulton County. Thank you all so much for your continued support of the Fulton County arts community.
15 seconds.
I appreciate you all. Thank you.
I am that I am, Brother Anthony Muhammad. I'm a spiritual man, no more religious man. Why do I say that? Because here in the 21st century, Fulton County Commissioner, we live in the state of Georgia, and as Mr. Stacey Abrams once said, Georgia is one of the richest states out of the 50 states in the Union. Why is that? We have in the majority of cities of Atlanta, the majority of cities we're, about 260,000 people look like myself. You have in Fulton County Jail this past year, over 15,000 people died due to the lack of support of Fulton County and Mr. Dick Anderson. Why are these dogmatic people, anti-matic people in the contingent are not being treated fairly according to Stacey? Because we have the divine mind, Mr. Pitt. The divine mind, Mr. Biden said. I am not stupid, I quote. I know who the power is, the divine mind. Who is divine mind? It's a universal number. The universal number represent the creator that you call God. But the divine mind is a watching fraternity that represent the power in Atlanta. And the power in Atlanta don't have no love for poor folk. Mr. Pitt, you've been on the job a long time. I know you spoke with Mr. Jose and many more about doing right, but you weren't voice. In this hall, you weren't voice. But my concern, as I've been talking to Atlanta, is collaboration with the Caucasians that's on divorce in Fulton County. And those like-minded people that want to do real, you have Ron Shakur on the board. I understand Ron was talking too much and not about the case, but I come to tell you it's time to do right, Mr. Pitt.
15 seconds.
It's time to tell the truth. When are we going to snap in America? We got Marla King birthday next month. A man got a brain blown out, Mr. Anderson, talking for the benefit of using the federal government money to help his people have housing, help his people have opportunities.
Good morning, everybody. I am Sheila Mance. I'm the founder of The Taste of Sofu. I think most of you might know about The Taste of Sofu. I saw such a need for the arts to be available for everybody, particularly in the South Fulton, that I developed that five years ago. I am a native of Atlanta and I went to Northside High School when the performing arts was formed and I saw how it has transformed lives. I also see the impact of The Taste of Sofu. When I saw a five-year-old and a 95-year-old at the end of the stage dancing all night, it just proved that the arts bring everybody together regardless of gender, race, age. It's the one binding thing for all of us. So I just think that it's very, very important that we continue to support the arts in Fulton County. Again, I have devoted my time and energy, along with my partner, Michelle Taylor Willis, for making sure that the arts are available for everybody in Fulton County so that we can grow. I do want to thank Commissioner Khadijah because she has been a great support for The Taste of Sofu and have a good evening.
Good morning. My name is Robbie Wyndham. I am an education and programs consultant with the Hammond's House Museum and I won't stand here in front of you all and break out in an R&B begging and crooning song or a rain dance. We've had enough rain over the last few days for that. But I simply want to thank you all for your continued support of the arts, particularly the Hammond's House Museum, as we just celebrated 35 years. It has given Atlanta natives like myself a place to truly call home. It has been a place that I can be my authentic creative self, as well as a place to not only grow in the arts, but to also become competitive in the field. Too often, the South is looked upon as a slow, just kind of secondary place when it comes to the arts and fashion. And as we all know, over the years, we continue to thrive and build and as our great Andre 3000 And as our great Andre 3000 of the Swats says, "The South has something to say," as well as my good friend Bame Joyner, that Atlanta does in fact influence everything. So thank you and Happy New Year. Hopefully, we can still say Happy New Year. Thank you.
Next five speakers, please come forward. Julie Allen, Waverly Lucas, Maria Guardio, Imara Kennedy, and Brian Allen.
Good morning. I'm Donna Watts, None, the Managing Director of the Hammond's House Museum. And I want to say Happy New Year to you all also. I just want to take a couple minutes just to say, to really highlight why, you know, we want to understand when you're looking at your budget, why the arts and culture is so important in this town. Arts and cultures are not just forms of entertainment, they are the heartbeat of the community, fostering creativity, diversity, and a sense of identity. And as you know, the economic impact, the arts and culture activities contribute significantly to our local economy. They generate jobs, attract tourism, stimulate business growth, community engagement. Arts and culture events provide a platform for community members to come together, fostering a sense of belonging and unity. They contribute to the social fabric of our county, creating shared experiences and memories. Education and enrichment. We are very deep into education. We get, do tours with children from public schools, private schools, homeschools, you know, we just really are in touch with folks all in, also in and at Fulton County. But they like coming to our area, our particular building because of, we can, you know, give you history for the neighborhood as well as the museum. Arts in schools, arts programs and community organizations are, play a crucial role in education. They enhance critical thinking skills, problem-solving abilities for youth. Additionally, they offer lifelong opportunities for residents of all ages. And equality of life. A vibrant arts and culture scene enhances the overall quality of our life in this county. It attracts talented individuals, families, and businesses, making our community an even more desirable place to live, work, and raise a family. So I just wanted to reemphasize that, you know, we want to thank you for the, well, for actually Michael Omax for coming up with the idea and even founding us 35 years ago.
Fifteen seconds.
And we did have a wonderful celebration last year for 35 years. And we want to thank you for your continued support. And we're going to leave you with our first-ever publication of our commemorative edition of our 35 years at Hammond's House.
Good morning, Commissioners. Happy New Year. I'm Julie Allen. Please review the email I sent to you today. And I want to share with you that Friday, January 12th, at noon, the U.S. House of Representatives will finally host medical specialists who have vast experience in treating SARS-CoV-2 infections and managing the injuries resulting from COVID-19 vaccination. The House will hear for the first time from medical subspecialists who have managed patients firsthand extensively published and presented on the topic and have been recognized as the clinical leaders in pandemic response. Our Georgia congressman is participating in hosting this. Testimony begins at noon. Please register to attend. Yesterday, Cobb County Board of Commissioners meeting presentation by Kristi Minor shows death and disability are on the rise in Cobb County. Who is doing this risk assessment for Fulton County? How can data transparency be enabled with anonymized data to further public health risk assessment and independent research? At the October 4th Commissioners meeting, District Health Director Dr. Lynn Paxton publicly responded to a question by Commissioner Thorne stating that Florida Surgeon General Joe Ladapo is controversial without data supporting her statement. Dr. Paxton's 2024 video promotes vaccines without data or risk assessment. January 3rd, Florida Surgeon General Joe Ladapo called for a halt in the use of COVID mRNA vaccines. Dr. Ladapo states, "If the risks of DNA integration have not been addressed for mRNA COVID-19 vaccines, these vaccines are not appropriate for use in human beings." Dr. Paxton emailed Commissioner Thorne on January 5th, sharing what she describes as "an excellent, award-winning newsletter about pertinent issues in public health." The newsletter begins and ends by dismissing Dr. Ladapo's safety concerns as rumor. "My email details the falsehoods of the fact-check effort with assistance from Kevin McKeonan, R&amp;D Lead on the Human Genome Project at MIT, a renowned leader in the DNA sequencing technology." Moderna's own patent states residual DNA is an oncologic risk for insertional mutagen- sorry.
Thank you.
Happy New Year to you guys. Thank you very much for your service. Waverly Lucas, co-founding director and resident choreographer for Balletchnic Dance Company. I'd like to begin by saying, January 15th, 2024, Balletchnic Dance Company will celebrate our 34th anniversary. Approximately 34 years ago, my wife and co-founder Nina Gilreth and I were in the Buckhead CVS and ran into Maynard Jackson. We introduced ourselves and our vision for Balletchnic being a vital part of the arts and cultural fabric of the metropolitan Atlanta area. He continued to engage us in conversation for nearly 30 minutes. From that encounter, he became a supporter of Balletchnic and would seek our opinions on the arts and culture. We began our journey with the Fulton County Board of Commissioners over 35 years ago as dancers with the Atlanta Ballet after Dancing with the Dance Theater of Harlem. We were charged to be here to support arts and culture and accepted the challenge. Today, I accept the challenge with gratitude for long-term support through the Fulton County Arts Council. Atlanta began the process of becoming an internationally significant city. We must support and invest in the arts to achieve this goal. Balletchnic will be representing and honoring you as we perform internationally in Amsterdam at the Holland Dance Festival, January 18th through the 28th, and in Toronto, collaborating with the National Ballet School of Canada, May 2nd. This summer, we will return to Tanzania, East Africa, where we implemented a fundamentals of ballet program. Thank you for your support and investment.
Martin Luther King, Justin from the Promised Land, a voter in Fulton County. And I have a dream. Whereas Fulton County population is greater than the four smallest states of the Union, whereas the problems that we've got with our court system, the sheriff's office, debauchery within the commissioner's office and the district attorney's office, people who have been laid up in the court, in the jail without being charged. It's just too much to have a county government that does not fit the function. When the structure doesn't fit the function, I have a dream, the Fulton County be split into at least 10 different counties, each with their own district attorneys, each with their own county commissioners, their own education systems, each with their own hospitals, each with their own jails, where local management has the say-so of what happens in their own respective counties. I have a dream, there will be a Milton County, a Palmetto County, a Buckhead County, a Hapeville County, and so on. I think at least 10 needs to be split to be manageable-
Fifteen seconds.
-for the people. States were never meant to be, counties were never meant to be as large as a state. When the United States became a country, it only had 2.5 million citizens.
Good morning, Commissioners, and Happy New Year. It's good to be with you again. And as others have said, thank you for your service. As many of you all know, I have sat at the helm of elected officials, so I know the challenges before you, because every issue that is brought forward to you is an important issue and is critical to the well-being and lifeblood of our community. And today, as you deliberate over a challenging budget, because it's challenging times in our communities, we just say, remember the A, the arts. What I do know is that government is not a business, but there are business acumen's that can help to continue to have government, you know, run effectively. So I want to come to you in a business state of mind as you deliberate the challenges of this budget. There's a number that you should know, which is 29.2 billion. That is the economic impact in the state of Georgia of the creative industries. That's not something that came from me or came from others within this community, that came from the U.S. Bureau of Economic Analysis. That is close to 5% of the Georgia economy that employs over 150,000 individuals within the creative industries, most of who live in and around Fulton County. Secondarily to you, I say, in just looking at Contract for Arts Services, we fund 176 arts organizations. That averages out to about $17,000 per arts organizations. It's money you can count on. Commissioner Thorne, and I just wanted to bring this to your attention. This is from your constituents in the northern part of our county. It's over 100 signatures of folks who say arts matter in every corridor of this county.
Fifteen seconds.
So we just say, thank you. And as you go into this deliberation, remember the A, the arts. God bless you.
Next six speakers, please come forward. Janet Hill, Ron Shakir, Margie MacLeod, Earl Ferguson, Jody Williams, and Jane Zolietek.
Good morning. My name is Brian Allen, Vice Chair of Libertarian Party Fulton County and District III Resident. I came to speak last month and offered to meet with you or your staff to discuss the budget, namely ways to cut it in order to save taxpayer dollars. I'd like to thank Commissioner Thorne and Commissioner Ellis for taking me up on my offer and agreeing to meet with me. I'd like to think that we had good, productive conversations, but feel free to ask them their thoughts. And my offer still stands, I'll meet with any of you. I've looked at the revised budget proposal, and while it's certainly helpful that a more detailed breakdown has been added, the numbers are going the wrong way. You need to be cutting the budget, not adding to it using underruns as an excuse. While I'm here, I'll go ahead and dispel some fallacies that I've heard from others. The first is the claim that funding programs creates jobs. That's an economic fallacy that's older than anyone in this room. It neglects the jobs that aren't created or even destroyed from the diversion of resources. The money you're spending doesn't just come from nowhere. It comes out of our pockets, and there's a finite amount of resources at any given time. When the government does just print money into existence out of nowhere, that causes problems too, namely rising prices. The second is the claim that a bunch of people, they've asked to support the funding. That gets into how the question is framed. People tend to support funding lots of things in the abstract. When you put it in context with the trade-offs that have to be made, then you start hearing a different story. Let's be honest, the people who come here to talk are not a representative sample of the county. There's over a million people in Fulton County, and most of them are too busy with a regular nine-to-five job or just life in general to be following the county budget process, let alone coming here to talk. So again, I ask you to do the right thing, say no to the special interests, and get the budget under control. Thank you for your time and attention.
Good morning, and thank you for your time. I'm here today again respectfully requesting action to be taken on deed fraud. This is my third time here with the Commissioners on this issue. Scammers are using real estate agents, bar members, and Fulton County government services to steal properties. Fulton County has a duty to uphold and protect and serve our citizens, and also to uphold the Georgia and U.S. Constitution and the land records. This is a known systemic problem, and our citizens are being targeted mainly African-Americans, seniors, females, and those that are vulnerable in these regentrified communities. And in the words of the Chief Justice, Chief Judge that you just heard from, "We are not receiving fair justice in Fulton County for these crimes." If you need assistance and you want to understand how this is being done, I am available, and I will walk you through this process and what is happening in these land records. Thank you for your time.
Ron Shakir, Southwest Atlanta. Wow, that's what it's all about. Fraud. The idea in the obvious look of the fact that Atlanta is being gentrified by any means necessary, with no sense of concern about the communities or how they was formulated or the history that these neighborhoods represent. The public housing, the low-income housing, the unaffordable housing, the housing and sheds that people lived in before public housing. That before was idea that it's not robbery to provide safe, secure housing, but we tore them down. How can we do that? But what that young lady talking about is the robbery that mothers and grandmothers and fathers are losing their properties and don't feel like it's nothing they can do. We're being told, you guys, is that, um, don't say nothing. You know, a young lady spoke to the press about the situations that are going on with the Fulton Housing Authority, and she was told by a member of this city council, "Don't say nothing." You know, before y'all got elected, you wanted your voices to be heard in the press. But now you don't want to have your voice to say nothing about citizens' insecure housing because of theft or injustice? It means Donna Burnett. Please, 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 don't think it's robbery that citizens have a right in understanding of the Constitution, and we lift it up high. It's some people that had more privilege than others, and it didn't matter. But it's a new thing that we should support and uphold, freedom of speech.
Good afternoon. Across the street, Rob Hicks, chairperson. Teamwork. We're not doing teamwork. Just like that lieutenant just left out, teamwork. City Council, the Housing Authority, no money, the homeless, you're not working together. Homeless is money. The people out here crying and what you're doing, the budget, spending unnecessary money, not a harm. It's not about that. I'm about the people, and the people put all of y'all in errant, because you're sleeping. But what I'm saying to you, Rob Hicks, why are you not working with the city, the Housing Authority? Where this money? We getting all this money coming in. What we doing with it? You went to school with art. You had art, because I don't think you would be what you are today, because you have to have that in school. And then the courthouse. How are you not going to put money in that you're going to serve in a part-time position? I love dogs. I love them, but you put your money in the wrong place. That's what I'm all about. I'm a veteran to a veteran. But if you wanted to be a veteran, but you didn't go in, but that's okay. If you went in, you'll know about teamwork, because that's what it's all about. All this money coming in Atlanta, what is, who's being accountable for it? Where this money going at?
Fifteen seconds.
Where is it? Where is it, Rob Hicks? I want to know where this money. Me and you talk, and you know where this money? Y'all don't work the city, say, I run it out of Housing Authority, no money, no homeless people. Do you see them people out there when you go across the street? Do you?
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker. Thank you.
Back to start. I'm Earl Ferguson. I'm a registered voter in Fulton County, and I follow the activities of the Fulton County Registration- and I follow the activities of the Fulton County Registration and Election Board. And I've told them in the past that the number of registered voters exceeds the number of eligible people that we have in the county according to the Census Bureau. The chairman disagrees with me, but she fails to realize or fails to state that the Fulton, that the estimates include felons and non-U.S. citizens who are not eligible to vote. The, this indicates that the board is not fulfilling their obligations to maintain the voter role, which is required by Georgia Section 21-2-28, 228. At your November, at your November meeting, the chair was here, and she stated that in no uncertain terms that the board will, will not and does not take any action to manage, to manage to the list. Again, they're not, they're not in compliance with state law. So I challenged a number of voters, Fulton County voters, who had moved, changed their address to North Carolina and registered to vote in North Carolina. And we have a section in the law, 21-2-217, which establishes residence requirements. And if you register to vote in another state, you're no longer a registered voter in Georgia. Simple, straightforward. All of my challenges were denied. I, two years ago, I submitted similar challenges, again with North Carolina. All of them were, were approved. The problem here is the chairman. I strongly disagree with what happened. I am filing a complaint with the State Registration Board, and I'm going to be at the board meeting tomorrow to ask them to reconsider. Thank you.
Last six speakers in Assembly Hall, please come forward. Charmaine Minifield, Lisa Adler, Matt Rowenzack, Devin Barrington Ward, Prophet Curtis Martin Hairston, and Alma Lot.
Hi, I'm Jane Zelik, a resident of Fulton County, and I want to thank all of the commissioners for your very valuable past support of the arts in Fulton County. I encourage you to maintain at least the 2023 funding level. The cultural heart of the South needs to continue to nurture a vibrant arts scene. Your funding is so important to the Atlanta metro arts community, to children, to art sizes of all sizes and abilities. It helps them fulfill their missions, and it makes the experiences available to Fulton County residents and visitors so much more vibrant than otherwise they would be, and that enhances our area's reputation. Not to overstate it, but you all set the stage. Please support arts in Fulton County by funding at, at or above 2023 levels. Thank you so much.
Good morning, Happy New Year, Happy Almost King Holiday. It's our season. My name is Charmaine Minifield. I'm a visual artist, a product of Fulton County. I, my family lives in College Park. I went to Riverwood High School in Sandy Springs. I, my first professional job was a Fulton County arts employee, assigned to the National Black Arts Festival, where I was the program director and community outreach director. So I am a product of Fulton County and now newly an executive director of my own nonprofit, Praise House Project, Inc. My project, The Praise House Project, first premiered at Oakland Cemetery to honor the 800 unmarked graves that were discovered there. And it has gone on to receive a National Endowment for the Arts, R-Town grant, to present the project in three communities in the metro area. It just closed at Emory University, where acknowledged their role in slavery and dispossession. It is moving next to Beacon Hill to acknowledge freedmen towns that are erased. And then it will go to Southview Cemetery to acknowledge the 1906 Race Massacre and the civil rights history of our city since. While it sits at Southview Cemetery, our partners include Fulton County Arts Council, the City of Atlanta, the National Black Arts Festival, a whole bunch of other folks that I work with and coordinate and have been over the last few years. In the last year, we've employed almost 100 artists in this project. We continue to uplift, preserving black narratives and preserving cultural and historic identity of communities as a way to preserve space. Placemaking and placekeeping is what we call it.
15 seconds.
We record our old histories of our elders, and we are celebrating these histories so that they're not forgotten and remove, and legacies removed, and therefore communities removed. And we thank you for your investment in the arts. Continue to invest. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Lisa Adler. I'm co-artistic producing director and co-founder of Horizon Theater Company, located in Little Five Points, Emin Park. And I am here to thank you because the arts flourish in Fulton County. We are celebrating our 40th year, and the only reason that we are here is because Fulton County invested in a small, very small, young entrepreneur when I was 24 years old here in Atlanta. And God knows, I never expected to be here 40 years later. But for 40 years, we've been coming before this board to advocate for the arts and to tell you how much it they matter to the community and how appreciative we are for the support. It's not the amount of money each organization gets, it's the investment. The investment brings more investment from the community throughout, and by giving to the arts, you are investing in success, and you want to invest in business success. Horizon, over these years, has served over a million people and hundreds of thousands of artists and patrons, and also generated millions of dollars for our neighborhood that people coming to attend. But I'm here really representing myself, and if there are 179 arts organizations being funded by Fulton County, that means there are 179 people like me who are investing their lives, their spirits, and their passions in the community. And by investing in the arts, you're investing in those individual entrepreneurs and their boards who bring the arts to the community. So I want to thank you for your support. I want to encourage you to have level funding for the arts for this year, and particularly for the Contract for Arts Services program, which is what gets to those individual organizations. Thank you so much, and God bless you in making some difficult decisions. Thanks.
Good morning, Commissioners. Matt Rowenzack, Fulton County resident. Everybody in the audience today that's coming to request money for arts, whether it's senior services, the courts, the public defender's office. You want to know where the money is? It's in the Elections Department. It's 39 million proposed for 2024. In 2022, we essentially had the same election year as we're going to have this year. You know how much they requested? 37 million. You know how much they spent? 27 million. Yet you get people that come up here like robots and say, fully fund elections, fully fund elections. Why don't you give us a reason why we should fully fund elections? What does that mean? We have Cobb County, who's about 75% of the size of the number of voters in Fulton, they spend five to six million a year in a federal election. Yet we're asking for 39 million. Those in the arts, if you haven't looked at the budget on page 17, it says you only get 6 million. I guarantee you, you could get an additional million from the Elections Department that is throwing our money down the drain. Everybody in this county knows it. It's a matter of whether you admit it or not. So are you going to take care of the taxpayer? Or are you going to continue to abuse our money? We've got the City of Atlanta that took $7 million from the federal government, and they're giving it to migrants. So if you're a Fulton County resident, how do you feel about that? Gross abuse in the City of Atlanta and in Fulton County. And lastly, I find it also interesting,
15 seconds.
Commissioner Arrington, that two of your items on here that are related to the Board of Ethics, you have an ethics charge or more filed against you. That doesn't seem very appropriate. Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning, Devin Barrington Ward. We are about to celebrate the King Holiday. I'm sure I'll see many of you all at Ebenezer and the March, and we'll be quoting Dr. King. But what I would like to see more than anything is for people to embody those practices of Dr. King. And one of the ways to embody that practice is he talked about, budgets reflect our moral priorities and our commitment to justice. And so right now, you all are debating about how we are going to spend the money. I want to say that I'm here today to speak up for the seniors who need those Uber rides, and they shouldn't have to go through an additional process on whether or not they meet the income threshold so that they can receive the discounts of those rides, because they have contributed to this county for so many years. This is the very least that the county could do for them. So that shouldn't be on the table. I'm also here to speak up for the arts, because a simple Google search, arts and crime prevention, shows so many statistics and data that proves that when we invest in art, we reduce crime. We are investing in public safety. I'm, it's not me that's saying that. That's the Department of Justice, that is the Department of Health and Human Services, that is researchers who have done this work more than many of the people in this room. And so I'm sitting here, and we're talking about a budget that's also inclusive of potentially $2.1 billion for a new jail. I want a better value for my buck as a Fulton County taxpayer. I don't want just $6 million for arts funding. I want more money for arts funding that shows an indication that we believe that when we invest in the arts, we are investing in our people, we're investing in our future, and we're investing in public safety. And I also want to make sure that our budget reflects that we pay a debt to the people, the seniors of this county, who have given so much to Fulton County, and we ask for so little in return. Thank you.
Well, you know, I'm not asking for nothing. I'm demanding stuff. I'm not asking for a thing. I'm demanding in the name of Jesus. I'm walking past women that want to commit suicide because they homeless on the street. I'm walking past women that been raped last night on y'all streets. You got money, Mr. Rob Hicks, you send 50, I think 50 million dollars back to the government, 40 million dollars back to the government. And I've never heard Bridgette say anything. I've never heard Dana say anything on any issue. Now, you, you know, you talking to a very educated person. Don't judge the book by the cover. Don't judge the book by the cover. See, legislator is over government. Who, who knows any legislators or governor in this, in this building right now? See, you looking at these people, you think these people dumb. They just smart as you. Now, like I said before, some of y'all ain't gonna be around next. See, I'm gonna wave bye to y'all, some of y'all. Bye, see y'all later. Because you're not doing your job. Now, I'm not, I'm not saying that as a, as a, just someone walking through that door. I know pastors from here to New York to LA and city council all over this, all over this state. If you're not doing your job, we're gonna find somebody else to do it. You understand? My voice carried weight. If I tell you this person not to vote for you, they not gonna vote for you. Plain and simple. I'm not gonna put no, I don't, no, don't vote for that person. Like if I ask you not to. So I'm just trying to tell you that. I take that, I take that blame. You understand? People dying on your streets freezing to death. I'm begging y'all to open up warm shelters. That's enough for me. People dying on your streets every day. People getting raped on your streets because they don't have shelters. Women walking past, I got two, I'm breaking up mental health fights on your trains and your, people mentally have cold outside, begging for food, and I'm breaking up fights. But y'all got the money and the buildings to change that, and you not changing that. That's what I'm saying. Now, at the same time, I'm going to these church pastors, telling them the same thing. Now, I know the Bible. The only thing you remember, I know the word.
My name, Alma Lot. I've been in this community for over 30 years. I never in my life witnessed so many homelessness, senior citizens and veterans in our community. West End, Vine City, Ingersett Avenue. Our representatives don't come out until it time to vote, and it's shameful. One bad seed is a rotten seed. So that make it bad for everybody. Y'all need to stop. I seen y'all put up a color ribbon for a dog shelter. Gave all these millions of dollars and all these black people homeless, senior citizens in my community, where I've been working at and walking in for over 15 years. I took money out of my pocket to serve the people and feed them. They come to y'all, money y'all for now and down. It's a shame the way y'all done us as voters. Y'all ought to represent us better than what you doing. We don't want no more affordable housing in our community. We want low-income housing in our community, because affordable mean a business, commercial, and everything. They getting them the right to come in our community. We don't want a 20-story building on Dr. King, where Dr. King walked at. We want housing in our community. We want y'all to vote down this 20-story building and start listening to your voters. It's a shame. It's a damn shame, I'm gonna say it like that, that y'all could sit up here and walk in a parade with Dr. King name in the front.
15 seconds.
I'm ashamed of y'all. I'm very ashamed of y'all. Y'all, y'all have poor leadership in these organizations, and I mean it from the bottom of my heart. Stop what you doing and help the damn people.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have six speakers on Zoom, 14 emailed in comments, but they are all similar and can be read in three.
Got six on Zoom. All right. Is that right? Let's go quickly.
Okay. The first person to speak is Ben Howard. Ben Howard.
Greetings from the field and staff, and special greetings to you citizens of Atlanta. To the Atlanta General Constitution and other media, please continue your investigative reporting of the Housing Authority of Fulton County, and especially that investigation by the federal government. I rest my case.
The next person to speak is Calvin Muldowney.
Good morning, Commissioners. Back in September 23, Commissioner Barrett sponsored a resolution supporting Fannie Willis in bringing RICO charges against Donald Trump and 18 others. Just this week, it has come to light that Fannie's office may not be so squeaky clean. The Fulton DA's office under Fannie hired a special prosecutor, Nathan Wade, who had never prosecuted a felony case in his career. Fulton County has apparently paid the special prosecutor a total of $652,000. As I understand it, Fulton County never did approve his hiring, but paid him anyway. It is alleged that DA Willis and Special Prosecutor Wade carried on a romantic relationship and took trips together to Napa, Florida, the Caribbean. Time will tell. The real tell of this matter lies in Special Prosecutor Wade's billable hours submitted to Fulton County and approved by Fannie. One entry is for eight-hour meeting with the White House Special Counsel in May of '23. Kind of curious as to what Fulton County business was conducted over eight hours with the White House Counsel. Another entry is for an eight-hour meeting September 18, entitled Interview with DC/White House. This was just three days after Trump announced his reelection bid. We don't yet know what was discussed, but what we do know is that Fannie's office brought out a rushed indictment announcement of the RICO case shortly thereafter. Seems to me we could have found, seems to me we have found the real collusion, and it is between the Fulton DA and the White House Counsel, colluding to destroy a political rival of the Biden administration.
15 seconds.
Fannie Willis, Fannie Willis and her special prosecutor should be suspended immediately and fully investigated. Fulton has been embarrassed in the past. We don't need to go down this road again. Thank you very much.
The next person to speak is Angela Robinson. Angela Robinson. The next person to speak is Ayanna Mitchell. Ayanna Mitchell. The next person to speak is Kenneth Rye. The next person to speak is Kenneth Rye. Kenneth Rye. Okay, the last person to speak is, the last four digits, nine, six, one, eight. With no one responding, that concludes our Zoom public comment.
That, that is Ben Howard, I've already spoken. Thank you.
That concludes the Zoom public comment.
Combine those, uh, what do you call them, emails?
Yes. Next we'll have the email comments.
The first email comment is from Jeffrey Mullave. I am seeking an explanation specifically from my District Commissioner Natalie Hall as to why taxpayer funds were used to pay a dedicated prosecutor without proper approval as described in State of Georgia Title 15-18-20, additional personnel as state employees. Furthermore, I seek an explanation from Ms. Hall as to what qualities distinguish the chosen prosecutor from other candidates, given his lack of experience in Georgia racketeering law specifically. I am a resident of the Fulton County and I live in the Old Fourth Ward. I want to make you aware of that I oppose the Resolution 23-0967. The next comment is from Jackie Minor. Ladies and gentlemen of the Fulton County Commission, thank you for making Fulton County a beacon around the state known for fostering a robust and enriching arts community. Your support of funding over the decades has helped to launch many art organizations and to sustain many more. Just as important as public safety, as economic development, as public health, arts and culture is a hallmark of a thriving community. Creativity is vital to our well-being. I am uplifted every time I walk into a space like Hammond's House Museum or the Alliance Theater, the Atlanta Symphony, Horizon Theater, or anywhere in Fulton County where artists and performers practice their craft. Please continue your longstanding commitment to this lifeblood of our community. Please fund arts and culture at its current level in the 2024 Fulton County Budget. Thank you for your consideration. Similar comments were also provided by the following citizens. Sin Alexander, Joni Perlee, David Donegan, Renee Hall George, Beth Lenkey, Virginia Cryho, Peter Hardy, Lindsay Bytoff, Laura Kralanda Nogal, Stephanie Gaylor. The final email public comment is by Kirk and Michelle Sercison. Given the recent judge's ruling in favor of the true the vote relative to challenges on the cleanliness of Georgia voter rolls, it is imperative that you now approve Jason Fraser for the BRE. Your previous allegations that Jason Fraser was not fit for the BRE despite his evidence-supported challenges to voter rolls, the judge's ruling clearly proves your allegations are not valid and have absolutely no bearing on Jason's ability to serve. In fact, Jason has saved Georgians' time and money helping those involved in Georgia elections to better serve Fulton County by providing useful information to clean the voter rolls of ineligible voters. You must quit denying Jason Fraser the opportunity to serve as appropriately submitted by the Republican Party representatives. It is important to meet your obligation to approve Jason Fraser immediately and allow the seat to be filled as requested. Are you approving Jason Fraser immediately as requested? This concludes all email public comments.
Thank you. Uh, 12:06, about an hour for public comments over the 30 minutes. Madam County Attorney, you wanted to clarify the, um...
Thank you Chairman Pitts. I did want to make one, uh, point of clarification on the ordinance we were discussing earlier regarding election of the Vice Chair to the Board of Commissioners. Um, I believe there was some confusion that arises from the fact that the version of the, um, ordinance amendment that was, um, in the agenda packet appears to be an earlier version that did not include the strike through of the language that was amended. Um, we did pull the post-agenda version, which is the, uh, official legislation that was passed by this body in October of 2021, and it contains the strike through language which, which makes it much more clear that the seniority requirement for Vice Chair was removed by this body per the ordinance that was passed in 2021.
Thank you. Perfect the record on that. Uh, continue, Madam Clerk.
On page six, County Manager's Items Under Open and Responsible Government, 240013, Finance, Review and Approval of the Fiscal Year 2024 Final Adopted Budget and Fiscal Year 2024 Budget Resolution.
All right, Madam CFO.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe the County Manager had some remarks that he wanted to make.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. We're pleased, uh, provide some brief remarks. Uh, pleased to provide this updated set of recommendations, uh, given the 2023 final results on revenue and expenses and of course the assumed mileage rate of 8.87. As normal, there were a lot of puts and takes at the end of the year. I just want to say a huge thank you to Sharon Hakim and Sabrina and their teams who worked through the holidays and, uh, really, uh, did a yeoman's job of pulling these numbers together. I think we have a clear, uh, and detailed budget document for both the public and, uh, hopefully for you as well, and then, uh, uh, of course with our departments being primary constituents, uh, in addition to, uh, to all of the above. As I've said before and showed you in great detail during the work sessions, uh, the assumed mileage rate of 8.87 removes the margin, uh, perhaps for error and places a premium on continuation of current services, so that is the focus. It doesn't allow for expansion of programs, new positions at any scale or initiatives that have often been funded by one-time use of funds from the previous year. I also want to emphasize that our ordinance makes this the County Manager's responsibility to submit, not to decide, so we're prepared to make any changes today as well as in the next meeting, uh, to get to an approved budget during January. The good news in the end of year results were they were 30 million better than expected, uh, than the mid-year view, and that's about 3.5% difference. I think that's about where we need to be. Uh, and revenues did exceed, did exceed expenses, which is also, I think, important in that that maintains the, uh, the reserves. Using the tranches that we talked about and kind of working from left to right, that allows us to both, uh, fully fund the first one, which is contractual, regulatory and life safety needs, and we'll go through that. And in the document itself, you'll see, again explicitly at departmental level, what those impacts would be if that was approved. It also importantly allows us to fund employee compensation enhancements. As you know, we talked about the necessity of a 5% COLA, that's included. This though would bring compensation rates up to market levels based on studies that we have done. In addition, in that same vein of compensation, we were able to, uh, add a continuation of the Fulton County Sheriff's Office, uh, overtime approach for 2X overtime for folks either assigned to the jail or predominantly reporting there, which we thought was an important, uh, compensation issue. While there are many enhancements that would deserve further review, we did not choose to do that given the, uh, again, given the resources available. Certainly you may, uh, see some or you may have already decided that some needed to be added, and we'll look forward to hearing from you on that. In our view, nothing rose to the level of current obligations, the 5% COLA and employee compensation. We still struggle with attrition unexpected, uh, generally where it's, uh, being driven by, uh, by pay rates. A new living wage of 38,000 would take us from below most of our peers to above our peers slightly. I think that's an important signal to, uh, to send, and that's being recommended as part of this compensation enhancement. We've also included all other funds. Of course Sharon and Hakim will, uh, I'm sure go through those. Uh, the new established inmate welfare fund is now a part of those funds, uh, and it's a reminder, as you look at all of those, that this is a $1.3 billion enterprise run for the public benefit. I also would want to say, just as I turn this over to Sharon, uh, we think that the allocation of these resources in 2023 greatly benefited citizens. We not only, uh, just finalized the, uh, contract with Grady with a signature by the principals yesterday for another 10 years, but delivered what I think, or at least I, new iconic facilities in elections, as well as the animal shelter, a new clinic that we, uh, opened with Morehouse and East Point, a breakthrough agreement, uh, with DBHDD to fund a Behavioral Health Crisis Center, which will deliver first part of 2024, a jail bridging plan, a jail feasibility study for the longer term, as well as met all of our KPIs, uh, in 80% or above in all of our departments, which allowed us to make a performance payment to our, uh, to our employees. So we anticipate a great year in 24, uh, as this all comes together. And again, we look forward to your, uh, feedback, changes and modifications today and then, uh, up to including the next meeting when we'll need to approve the budget. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to, uh, Sharon Whitmore and let her go through the specifics and then answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam CFO.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we do have a, uh, very brief presentation focused today on the, uh, general fund, primarily on, uh, the, uh, final year-end results from '23 and the impact that, uh, those results have on the, um, recommendations in 2024. Um, so on this first slide, as the manager indicated in his, um, comments, we did have, um, better performance than expected. Um, from a revenue perspective, we had projected 832 million in revenue. We received 839. It's a $7 million difference. On the expenditure side, we had projected, um, expending 865 million. Our final, uh, year-end expense numbers were 836. That's, um, a difference of 28.9. When you take those two together, um, that improved our, um, overall fund balance position by 36 million at the end of the year. Um, at the bottom of the slide, you can see, um, uh, how the improvement runs through the fund balance numbers, and we did, um, indicate in this presentation that, um, of that 36 million that was picked up, a portion of that really related to receipt of the funds that were paid over from the Sheriff's Department out of the inmate welfare fund. So we wanted to, um, highlight those and ensure that they were carried forward into '24 to be used for that purpose. Um, next slide, please. This next slide provides you with, um, the underlying, um, uh, differences or the underlying, um, items really causing the differences in our final year-end numbers from what we had originally projected. On the left-hand side of the slide in the revenue column, um, we ended up again, uh, receiving more revenue than we anticipated. The top part of the, of that slide shows where, um, the overages occurred, um, in the inmate welfare fund. Um, you see the $6 million that was received coming in. Um, we did receive more in public utility taxes than we had projected. We received more in tax, uh, commission on tax collections, um, than we had projected. And, um, uh, in the bottom three areas, uh, interest income was better, um, more fines and fees coming in from the Sheriff's Office, and then a laundry list of other areas that produced about, uh, an additional, um, $100,000 in, um, additional resources. As far as areas where we did not meet our projections in '23, um, current year property taxes was the biggest area. Um, we had, uh, uh, assumed a 96% collection rate in our projections. We did not meet that. We were just shy of 95%. So that additional percentage, um, has been carried forward and included in, um, our prior year, uh, receivable balance and included in the revenue for the proposed budget in, um, '24 as an adjustment. Um, additionally, local option sales tax, motor vehicle and indirect costs, um, all came in slightly below what we had projected. Um, on the expenditure side, uh, at the end of the year, as departments were closing out, um, their, uh, invoicing with various vendors, um, and looking at their, um, purchase orders and contracts and remaining balances that they had opened, um, they identified 5.7, um, in purchase orders that were, um, open at the end of 2023 that they knew they were not going to utilize, but that they would have invoices coming in, in '24 that we would need, um, to have the spending authority to cover. So we have, um, uh, rolled the spending authority for those, but no additional resources to '24 to cover that. So 5.7 million, um, of what we had planned to be spent in 2023, um, was tied up in these, uh, purchase orders that we knew we would have to pay against, but we just didn't have the invoices at the end of last year to do it. The next line, 12.9 million, that represents, um, the portion of, uh, ma, of, of funds that had been encumbered last year that we did not have any pending invoices, um, against. And so those purchase orders lapsed, freed up that budget money, and, and that is what, um, is driving that improved performance on the expenditure side. Um, and then lastly, salary savings, um, uh, from unfilled positions, um, we ended up not using 12.4 of what we had projected that we would use, um, in our mid-year projections. Together, that's about 31 million, um, in improved expense position at the end of the year. Next slide, please. So the impact that, um, this has on the '24 budget from a revenue perspective, um, we had originally programmed 879 million in the proposed budget that we provided to you in November. Um, adjustments that we need to make to that as a result of, uh, '23's performance is we need to increase the prior year property tax number by $8 million. That's connected to that 1% that we had projected that would be collected in '23 that was not, and we need to bring that forward and increase our, um, prior year receivable balance by that amount. Um, the other item is, um, now that the inmate welfare, um, program has been moved from the Sheriff's, um, office to the, the county, um, in addition to the resources that we received last year, we will continue to receive commissions, um, from that program, and we've estimated the commission amount at $5 million for this year, so that would need to be included in our revenue appropriation as well. From a reductions perspective on the revenue that we had, um, originally included in the proposed budget, we need to reduce the amount of our prior year public utility collections because we collected more last year than we expected. So that amount is, uh, $4 million. Uh, we've also reduced the commission on tax collections, um, down so that it agrees to the amount of tax collections, um, on the 2023 levy that the Tax Commissioners Office provided to us, the estimated tax commission collections on that levy. Um, and then lastly, because we expect to see some downward movement in interest rates, we've lowered our projection on, um, interest income. All of this together results in about a $5 million adjustment. Um, it's a, it's a positive adjustment, but a $5 million adjustment to, um, our proposed revenue, bringing it from 879 million to 884 million. Next slide, please. Um, on the expenditure side, um, I think the manager covered this as well in his remarks, um, but we, we made, um, essentially three major adjustments to the, uh, expense budget, um, recommendations. The first being, uh, to provide, um, funding for that first priority tranche of, um, enhancements that we were not able to fund in the proposed budget presented on November 15th. The second was to fund, uh, the second priority tranche, which is the funding for the, um, SEAGUL Market Rate Pay Plan Adjustment. And then the, um, the last item is to appropriate funds for, um, the inmate, uh, welfare fund in the county's general fund. Um, so this includes both that carryforward balance as well as an anticipation, um, of that $5 million in additional commissions that we expect to see. The plan is to, um, appropriate the full amount, um, the $6 million, what was actually received and transmitted last year, and then appropriate, um, the balance as we see those commissions being earned during the course of the year. Um, collectively, this results in a 36.5 million dollar change in our total expense budget recommendation, bringing that total to 953 million point seven. Next slide, please. Um, and then lastly, um, with regard to fund balance position... And then lastly, with regard to fund balance position, our carryforward balance from 2023, which is our beginning fund balance, is $227.3 million. We would add in our proposed revenue, revised proposed revenue of $884 million, reduce that then by our revised proposed expenditure budget, $953.7 million. And that would leave us with roughly $157.6 million, which meets the minimum fund balance requirement. For the purposes of calculating the minimum fund balance requirement, we did exclude this year the inclusion of the inmate welfare fund because we have brought forward resources to fund at least a portion of that, and we wanted to get a sense of where those expenditures may actually end up before we include it in the calculation for the fund balance reserve. And with that, Mr. Chairman, we really focused our, our slides today on the general fund, but we are ready to answer any questions or have discussion or comments, if the board has any comments about anything in the revised proposed budget at this point.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager and Madam CFO. Commissioners, any questions at this time? No questions? All right, Commissioner Thorne?
Um...
Or, or comments?
We used to fund the animal shelter, and so that's no longer a part of the budget. What freed up, what amount did that free up for us for this year's budget?
Commissioner Thorne, we established a separate animal services fund. In doing that, we, we reduced both the revenue and the expenditures that have been previously earmarked for the animal shelter. We've had agreements in place with the cities generating revenue, and we had the expense budget in the general fund. We felt like based on opening a new facility, increasing the size of the facility and the underlying costs associated with it, that we would pull it out and set it up in a separate fund. So what we've actually done is reduced revenue and expenditures in the general fund by the amount that we were expending on the contract, receiving from the cities and spending on the contract with Lifeline. And then we moved over the portion of the expense that the county is legally required to provide, which is the rabies control. So that is what is still sitting in the county's general fund as, as a, a cost to the county. Everything else has been moved over to that internal service fund so that we can track those costs cleanly and separately for the operation of, of that facility.
Thank you. So it's a net zero? Okay. One, one concern that I do have is our elections department. It was brought up today in public comment, the amount of money we spend. I think we could probably trim in that area more. As I said last meeting, using temp workers, a $12.8 million contract for six months is exorbitant. No other county in the state, even Gwinnett, who's similar size, uses that amount of temp workers. And that amount, they're going to come back to us in May with more, another contract to extend to the end of the month. So I don't know what they've budgeted for the July through December, but I think that's an area we can maybe trim some cost-ins, free in some money, as well as voter education and outreach. That was something that was created in 2020 when we had a lot of grant money. We no longer have that grant money. We are budgeted almost $1 million for voter education and outreach, and I think we could maybe trim and free up some money there. No other county has a budget that size, or people don't even know what voter education outreach is when I speak across the state with other counties and other elections departments. Another thing that was brought up in public comment was the $7 million that Atlanta received for immigrants. Have we received any money or do we anticipate having problems? I've read articles in the AJC, and they interviewed immigrants that are up in Roswell, which is not the city of Atlanta. And why is the money going to the city of Atlanta and not coming here to the county? And do we expect to have any implications from the immigrant?
Commissioner Thorne, I'm, I'm not aware of any resources that we're expecting to receive for that purpose, but I will take that back to our grant administration team and have them look, look at that and also to see if they can find the specifics on the resources that the city of Atlanta did receive, if it was based entirely on something that Atlanta submitted for Atlanta alone.
As well as when we're talking about grants, when I went to DC this fall, I met with different departments up in DC to see what grant money was available. And with arts, there seemed to be money available to fund some of these nonprofits. And from what they told me is that we, as a county, had not applied. So I'd like to see if we could get any grant money to supplement our nonprofit arts programs on a federal level and not take it from our local county taxpayers. And lastly, lots of public comment today about our district attorney. I know she's asking for roughly four to five million added to her budget. I am, I'm not exactly sure what tranche that is in. I did meet with her last month, and I'm thankful that she agreed to meet with me or asked to meet with me because I believe in having conversation. I'm trying to come into this with an open mind with the departments that we fund. So I'm, I'm thankful that we did get a meeting, but transparency was not there when I asked her the very questions that were in this very lengthy filing by this attorney this I've never met this attorney, never talked to this attorney, but as I've skimmed through it, the allegations are frightening. I've asked numerous times as to why hiring special counsel hasn't come through us. Our attorney, Sujo, has been gracious with me and patient with me in explaining the legal aspect as to why she doesn't have to come through us. And there are some disagreements, but either way, this filing is shocking. The accusations are shocking, the potential of misallocation of county funds that were given to her in 2021, 2022, and this last year. I believe we need some transparency as a commissioner. I asked for transparency. I asked her how much this election interference case was costing the county. The answer I got was that Lady Justice has no price, and I wasn't given any amounts. I believe that as commissioners, we need to know how much this is costing us. While we're looking at spending $2 billion on a jail, while we have people dying in our jail because they aren't getting their indictments, and we have a court backlog, I think the citizens of this county need to know how much is being spent and how much resources are being diverted, not only for her office, but closing down the street for multiple weeks at a time, having sheriffs on every corner, being paid to guard the street. People are being told to work from home. There are a lot of costs associated with that, and I believe that the citizens of Fulton, the taxpayers of Fulton County need the right to know. And those inmates that are sitting in jail and their families need the right to know that. Thirdly, when I asked her about the Nathan R. Wade expenditures in particular, I didn't get an answer. I was told that I'm just picking on him because he's black, and I don't really care. I'll say I've never met him. I have nothing against him. And I think the citizens, the taxpayers, need some clarification, some clarity on that if we are going to, if we are going to provide her a larger budget. I just wanted to kind of get that out in the open, and I'm hoping that you guys can assist us in giving us some clarification, some transparency, and not only for us, but for the people that are concerned out there. Thank you.
So just to be clear, now, you're asking the manager and CFO to research the issues that you raised? Okay. All right, Commissioner Natalie Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On page 11, item number four, the increase in the budget for the non-agency department by $13 million recurring.
Where are you, Commissioner Hall?
Page 11.
Oh, the budget book.
Of the, let me give you the exact, this is part of the memo from Dick Anderson to the Board of Commissioners, from Sharon through the county manager's office, subject fiscal year 2023 budget year-end actuals and fiscal year 2024 recommended changes to the proposed budget. So on page 11 of that document, number four, which says 2024 second priority dash tranche two dash employee compensation. All right. In that paragraph, it says, "The funding will be used for compensation plan adjustments including implementations of the new living wage." I could not find a definition anywhere of the new living wage. And so my question is, exactly what is that? What's the salary threshold, you know, the starting salary under this new living wage? Does that, where does that put our Fulton County employees who were below the living Does this set everyone that was below a, a living wage at a new, a new living wage? And exactly what is that?
Commissioner Hall, I'll allow Mr. Herman to answer all of those questions.
All right. Thank you so much.
Good morning, Commissioner, and Happy New Year, all commissioners and everyone who's listening. Kennedy L. Herman, Jr., Chief HR Officer. Commissioner, to, to answer your question directly, the proposed $38,000 that we're suggesting the board adopt as the county's new entry-level salary would catapult the county back to the front of the line as the best employer of choice of public sector employers in the metro area. Right now, we're trailing behind the city of Atlanta and, and slightly above Gwinnett, but that $38,000 salary would put us back to the front of the line ahead of Cobb, DeKalb, Gwinnett, and the city of Atlanta. And so what it would also do for our employees is any employee who's currently making the $32,000 amount, which is our current minimum, we would automatically move them up to $38,000, and that would be the new compensation moving forward. And then any other employee being hired would hire, come in at $38,000, or if they're part-time or, or temporary, their hourly rate equivalent to that, which is $18.27, I believe. So, so that would, that would be our approach moving forward if the board adopts our recommendation for $38,000 as the new entry-level salary for the county.
Thank you. And as we have discussed in years past, a living wage is not a living wage. And actually, $38,000 is still not a living wage in Atlanta and Fulton County, although that would put us, as you say, at, at best in class amongst other governments. It still doesn't put us best in class amongst the people who are making those low salaries. I don't know if you recall, some years ago, before many of our new commissioners were even on this board, we had a discussion about the subsidies and the government assistance that people receive when they are at these low salaries, these so-called living wages, and how once you try to increase their salary above the living wage, they start to lose the assistance that they are receiving from the government, which then puts them in a worse situation because now they don't get the food assistance that they had before. They don't get the daycare assistance. They don't get the housing voucher. Once you put them past a certain salary, they begin to have to take on those, those bills themselves, and they do not make enough money to actually do that. And so I'm concerned that we still have not raised the bar high enough to ensure that people are making a wage that can sustain themselves and their families. But I do commend you on at least trying, but we need to still continue to look at this, and we need to raise it higher. It really needs to be somewhere above the $40,000 mark because I want you to go back and look at, there was a document, a spreadsheet, that listed all the assistance that every person gets, and then it listed the salary range, and it listed by what would disqualify a person from receiving that government assistance. And it showed the salaries, and it was well above $38,000. So, but thank you. Appreciate the response and the answer.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I have just a couple of questions, just to follow up Commissioner Hall's questions, Mr. Herman. On the $13 million, or this might be you, Ms. Whitmore, on the, on the $13 million SEAGUL Market Rate Plan, is that all for the minimum, the lowest wage employees in the county? Or does it raise other folks as well?
No, Commissioner. That third step in our three-part compensation initiatives over the course of the 2024 cycle, what that intends to do is now also bring our entire pay plan into current market rate standards. Commissioner, before you, you were here back in 2025, sorry, 2015, we had a, a group by the name of the Archer Company come in and do an analysis. And at that time, it established a new compensation structure, and the board had directed the HR department that every five years or so that we needed to go out to make sure that our market salaries were consistent and competitive. So that's what we're proposing now, that it's clear that the Archer Plan, it has become stale, and we're starting to lag behind in all of the entry-level salaries. So the new proposed salary rate structure shows new, higher entry-level salaries. And again, again, if, if I'm a computer analyst, for example, and the new entry-level salary is $65,000 for that grade, and I'm making 50, my new salary goes to the new minimum as well. So you have a lot more employees also being impacted in that exercise, and I think it was a total of 686 employees will be impacted when we do the third tranche of the, of the implementation of the SEAGUL study. And Commissioner Hall, I forgot to provide you, it's another 235 employees who would have their salaries increased to the new $38,000 as well, if approved by the Board of Commissioners.
I was going to ask how many were at the, at the minimum level. So thank you for providing that.
Yeah, 235.
So do you know what the dollar amount is specifically for that 235 group?
Right now, we have estimated of $1.5 million with an implementation date of February 14th.
And our, February 14th?
Correct. Very strategic, Commissioner. You caught on to what we're doing.
Well, then, that confuses me a little bit because, Ms. Whitmore, when we were speaking yesterday, I thought we were, were we not delaying some of this until April?
It's, to Mr. Herman's point, there are three items that are in the budget for, that are compensation-related. The first being a 5% cost of living increase. And if, if approved, then our recommendation is for it to be effective January 31st. Then followed by the change to the minimum salary. So that would then be February 14th, and that would impact... So, that would then be February 14th, and that would impact 235 individuals to raise them to the new minimum of $38,000. Then, with the funding that we have presented to the Board, we would be able to implement the Segal Pay Plan changes effective April the 10th, and change the salary ranges for the balance of the workforce.
Okay. Thank you. On the changing topic, on the inmate welfare fund, can you speak to, sir, I'm a little bit confused about what we're going to be spending it on versus what it has been spent on in the past and all that. I know you have a list of the specific items, so I'm not looking for a list of those items, but rather, I'm a little just confused, because we moved over $5 million or so from this year, correct?
Yes, ma'am. They transferred a little, a little more than 5, 5.5, I think.
That was money that was like, was that all the money that was collected last year?
That was the balance of what they had in their bank accounts. So, it, it would have included anything they collected last year, and anything that they still had from any previous year's collections that they had not expended. So, they transferred over to us their bank balance. And so, what we have done is to program that amount, plus, we expect to receive additional commissions this year, and those will come directly to the county. And we estimate, based on previous year's collection data, that it seems like the commissions have ranged from $4 to $6 million. So, we just said, "Let's use $5 for the first year," and see what is actually generated in commissions that would be sent to the general fund. So, we've worked with the Sheriff's Department to get all of those set up and transferred to where the payments will come directly to the county treasury and be recorded in the county's general fund.
Okay. So, I think what I'm a little confused about is on the expenditure side of that, if they were bringing in around $5 million, and there was some issue about what it was getting spent on, that it was getting spent on some of the incorrect things for what it was intended, and they had a carryover from previous years, they weren't, they clearly weren't spending it all on the things that we're going to spend. Like, if it's blankets and the things, the list that you have, it seems like that expense is less than $5 million a year. Is that correct?
Based on the, the information that we've had the opportunity to review, I think the range of expenditures for those items may be closer to the $3 million level. Again, we won't know for certain until we really start working with the Sheriff's Department this year. Our intent is to bring a procurement package forward to the Board at the next meeting to go ahead and set some of this up.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but we, we should have some, we should have some idea. We should be able to budget for that, for what is, what was spent, because they've spent it in the past, and I'm assuming it went through our purchasing.
It did not.
Okay. So, they just bought things on their own?
They did it. It was all done independent.
And they didn't provide that when the audit was done of it?
Well, the, they have provided their check numbers and the amounts and vendor, so we have some information for what they were spending the resources on. There are, there were some items in the expenses, things like software packages, physical assets, and, and things like that, that we would not expect to continue to pay for those out of this set of resources. But the things that they have, that the things that we have on the list, and I'm, I don't have, I'm sorry, I don't have that, the expense detail in front of me, but I want to say that the amount that they were expending in, of the things that were on the list was somewhere in like the $2 to $3 million range. I want to say it was like high twos, low threes.
All right. So, here's what I'm confused about, and, and maybe I missed something, so please just fill me in if I did. It seems like what you've said, at least in this presentation, and what I thought I heard when we were speaking yesterday, is that we are bringing in the $5 million from last year, the balance. We're expecting to collect an additional $5 or so million, getting us to 11, so 5-point whatever in both cases. And we're putting aside $11 million to spend on those specific things when it's only going to cost us $3 million. So, it seems like there should be an $8 million overage that...
So, what we were trying to do is to match the resources coming in that were inmate-generated resources to what we would have available to spend for inmate-related expenses. So, again, because this was only recently transferred, I think we're still working through a lot of the mechanics and the details, but what we tried to do from a budget perspective was to make sure that we don't take any of the resources that are being generated through these commissions on inmate commissary and phones and things like that, and use them for other non-inmate-related expenses in the general fund. So, all the money that came in, and all the money that we, the revenue that we expect to receive this year, we tried to match the expenditure budget to that. It doesn't mean that we will fully spend all of those resources, but we wanted to at least match it in the general fund, so that what came in and what we planned to expend would, would be equal, and we wouldn't be peeling off any of those resources to use for a non-inmate-related expense, or something completely outside of the law enforcement jail arena, if, if that makes sense. So, yes, you're right. If we receive all of the revenue that we expect to receive, and the expenditures do not come up to that same level, there will be some resources that are not utilized. And our plan is to try to continue to carve those out every year, so that it's clear we're keeping, you know, our expense and revenue matched up. Every year, it will not be $11 million. It's $11 million this year, because we're bringing, we're bringing something in that we received at the end of last year.
Right. I, I get that, but I feel like we, we need that information as, so we can make decisions about this budget. And it does seem like, because, whether right or wrong, I think we know wrong, there were things being spent out of the inmate welfare fund when it was managed by the sheriff that are now not going to be covered by that money. So, how are we correcting for that in his budget?
Well, we did advise him that he should submit a supplemental budget enhancement request, and he indicated that he, you know, and he put together a document that he reviewed with us, which I think is slightly different from a document he recently, I think, began circulating and reviewing with each of you all individually. But we did not make any changes to his recommended budget, because he indicated he was going to visit with the Board individually.
Well, it seems to me, and this is not a demand, just a comment, that the, that the $8 million or so over the $3 million spend this year that we're likely to have on specific things on your inmate welfare list, that that $8 million, now, I couldn't tell you which line items in his, in his enhancement request, but that that $8 million should go back into supporting the jail in some form or fashion, so back into his budget to support the jail. Or if Dream is picking up some of those things, then to support those things for Dream, or whatever the case may be, but just have it sitting in a pot for us to approve as a, we'll see what happens, feels a little too vague for me.
In, in the memo that we sent to the Board when we received the funds, and we sort of outlined how we would plan to move forward with this, we did include, in addition to the direct inmate items, we did include items that you, you could say would be Dream-related, so things that may be directly related to inmate vandalism, that would require substantial expenditure. We would potentially be able to tap into these funds to cover those costs, if we're able to tie the issue back directly to consistent and repeat inmate vandalism. So, we did, we did try to plan for some of those types of expenses that the sheriff had, had included, but we wanted it to be connected to inmate vandalism.
I hear all that. I just, my sense is that I, I would be far more comfortable approving a budget where that $8 million is directed somewhere. And I, you know, where, what, what the appropriate spots are is, you know, certainly open for conversation, but to me, that, that needs to be dealt with before we sign off on this. The only other thing I have to say, just a comment, which is that the, I just want to sort of be really loud about the fact that the revenue that is projected is $884 million, and the expenditures that are proposed are $953.7 million. So, we are planning to spend significantly more than we are bringing in, and we have been doing this now for how many years? Anybody?
It's been a, it's been a very, very, very long time. We typically use fund balance to help balance the county's total budget.
And the fund balance is, I mean, this doesn't seem like a sustainable practice. I'm just putting that out there. From a business and accounting thought process, it just seems sort of unsustainable. And, you know, we're, I know from the conversations I've had with the various elected officials on the justice side, as well as some of my colleagues sitting up here, that there are things we still would like to see included in this budget. And so, then we're going to just increase that expenditure even more and not increase the revenue to even come close to matching what we're spending. So, I mean, I think we have to be looking at, as we make our requests, again, just a comment, I think we need to be looking at both sides of the equation, both the revenue side and the expenditure side. And, you know, I've said before, which is, you know, I understand what some folks popular and some folks unpopular, that I personally think raising the military assumption that we're making in the budget is going to be necessary to accomplish all the things that we need to do. So, I'll just put that out there for today. That's all I have.
All right. Commissioner Arrington?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I'll start out by saying, I would like to see a budget with the art funding restored to 2023 levels, as well as Fulton Films restored to the 2023 level. I also, in speaking with, I know the District Attorney's Office and with the Sheriff's Office, let's start with the Sheriff's Office. I understand that there's an $800,000 grant, and that they need matching funds, or that we need matching funds in order to obtain the $800,000 federal matching grant? Is that in the budget?
Commissioner Arrington, I believe that we transferred out of the Sheriff's underruns, we transferred an amount to the grant fund to support the first-year funding requirement on that. So, we've covered the first year, an amount that would be equal to the first year.
Okay. Thank you. And the $90,000 for the Governor's Office of Highway Safety Grant, matching grant, was that done as well?
I don't think we covered that one, no, sir. But we, we did cover the, the one for the eight, a portion of the one for the $800,000.
So, I would certainly like to see that grant match the Governor's Office of Highway Safety. They awarded us $343,000, and apparently, we need, all we need to contribute is $90,000. So, I don't know why we wouldn't do that out of $1.3 billion, unless we don't want our highway safe. As for the DA's office, we've got this ongoing issue, and I think it transcends the DA's office, I think it transcends all of our justice partners, is these orca positions and how we fund and make those positions full-time, so that people don't go start looking for other jobs, because they think their, their money's going to run out mid-year. And I know we accelerated that timeframe, so that money was supposed to last, I think, maybe till August or September, and we said, "Go on and pay it." So, that money may be running out sooner. And so, if someone thinks the money for their job is going to run out in June, guess what they start doing in February, in March? They start looking for other jobs. So, we got to find a way to make that money permanent. Unless we just don't want the orca people, we can just get rid of orca altogether. But if, 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 if we think that it makes sense, if we think that having orca funding makes sense, and having those people make sense, then we need to adjust our budget accordingly, to make sure that we have the resources to cover those orca employees, and to make sure that they have full-time status. Now, what about, I guess, in previous years, these departments, or they were allowed to use salary savings, but now they're not allowed to use those salary savings that we, was there a policy change on use of salary savings?
There's not been a policy change on the use of salary savings. We may handle it slightly different year to year, depending on what else is, is going on. But I don't think that we denied anyone the use of salary savings last year. At, I will say this, at one point in time last year, we were holding, because we were not sure what would be happening with, if we would be increasing the total number of outsourced inmate housing. So, we had held off a little bit on use of salary savings, but they can't take their salary savings and use it to create other permanent expenses. So, they can use it for something that's one-time in nature.
I'm sorry, what?
Attrition savings, you know, that we use to balance the budget. In other words, rather than waiting till, to recognize salary savings at the back end, we are actually recognizing some of the salary savings at the front end and using it to balance the budget. So, we're not fully funding all the positions like the way we used to.
All right. So, the DA's office states that on November 27th, they were informed that the county was taking 22 positions that they deemed were vacant on October 30th. Is that correct?
That, that would have been the attrition factor that was applied for the 2020, yeah, for the 2024 proposed budget. So, there's an, there's an attrition factor that's applied.
So, so, so it sounds like there was a policy change to applying the attrition factor?
The DA, I honestly don't recall. The DA's office, I don't think, was included in the attrition factor that was applied in the '23 budget. We did the same thing in '23, but we may have ended up, at the end of the process, excluding the DA's budget from that. But we applied the attrition factor across all departments in the general fund that had vacancies in the development of the '24 budget.
So, when you applied that attrition factor, do you talk to the department? Because they say that 18 of those 22 positions were already filled. So, is there any communication prior to applying the attrition factor? So is there any communication prior to applying the attrition factor?
Yes, commissioner, departments were told. And also, we use the information available in our system to determine which positions are vacant, which ones are not vacant. So we use that information. And then the way this is supposed to work, it's not like, you know, we're telling departments not to fill their, not to fill their positions, but to manage their budget and do the hiring, you know, with the understanding that, you know, we've taken certain amount of salary savings upfront.
Well, we, we need to get y'all the same system because they're saying that 18 of the positions were filled in their system, and you're saying that your system showed the positions were not filled. So how do we get y'all the same, looking at the same system?
Commissioner Arrington, we can go back and take a look at that, but, but my guess is, is that these may have been positions that the district attorney had either made offers on, that there is no way for us to see that when we're looking at the vacancies that are in the human resource system. So it, you know, she, she will cycle through positions through the course of the year, and she will run a particular vacancy rate, as will every other department. So we look at it, it's a snapshot in time, and then it's management decisions on how they ultimately end up funding these positions. We have, historically, we have done this both ways. We've fully funded every vacancy for the full year, knowing that a portion of those positions would remain vacant for some portion of the year, and that other positions would become vacant and remain vacant for some portion of the year. So, you know, we, we do, at some point in time, have to take a snapshot of what things look like and make a calculation and apply an attrition factor, if you will, to every department that has, and has vacancies and maintains vacancies through the course of the year.
I think it would also be helpful if we were to call and check in and to make sure that those offers have not been made and to make sure that that attrition factor, i- if, if, if there's, if, if your system is showing 22 jobs open and she's got 18 offers out there, then that's a problem. All right? Because then that means either she can't offer those 18 jobs or, so, I understand perhaps your system might show, but that's why I asked, do you communicate with them? Do you pick up the phone and say, hey, our system is showing you have 22 vacancies? Can you confirm whether you have 22 vacancies? And they can say, no, we only have four vacancies because we have 18 offers out. There needs to be some type of checks and balances so that we're not just looking at Xs and Os. We have to understand what these people are doing. And I understand you all are finance, so all y'all do is look at the numbers, but there are real-life implications here. There are real-life people working behind those numbers, relying on those jobs, relying on the ability to make offers. They're trying to get these numbers down. They're trying to get the people out of the jail. They're trying to reduce the jail population. All of this stuff is interconnected. And so just looking at Xs and Os isn't really sufficient. And that's why, again, I asked, do we communicate with them? If there's going to be an attrition factor that is applied, it seems that we need to have a checks and balance system that says, hey, let's call them to make sure that these positions are in fact unfilled. So, I, I mean, I think we need to certainly look at that as well. If they've got 18 offers or 18 filled positions, and you took away 22 positions due to attrition without communicating or contacting them, then, and, and I mean, I assume that maybe they, you contacted them, but let them know after you did it rather than prior to doing it. And I think, you know, there are always unintended consequences. So, um, those are the, um, the main things that I, you know, that I want to see in there. I think a lot of this stuff that the sheriff is requesting falls, you know, if, if, if it isn't in, if, if there's no way to get it in the budget, training and development, they, they got to be certified. We don't, we don't want our sheriffs uncertified, do we? We don't want sworn sheriffs that aren't certified with the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies or the American Correctional Association. I assume we want them to be certified with those organizations. So we, we got to find a way to include that in there. And, and if not, those type of things have to be in trunks one. Sheriff and the DA's request, the justice system request, in my mind, have to all be in trunks one. So the, the first thing to be considered, and I like what the, what the guy said earlier, take the arts money from elections. It sounds like we've got plenty of money left in elections. Or non-agency, you know, that's your favorite place to hide the money, Madam CFO. And you do a great job of hiding and protecting it. That is not a slight at all. That's what you're here to do, and I have a greater understanding for that every day.
Commissioner Optu Rockman.
I'm playing. I've got a couple of questions. And county manager, Sharon, if you all can give me some clarification. We have allowed our justice partners to use their salary savings. Are we not allowing that now at all for our justice partners?
We still allow the use of salary savings, as it accrues.
Okay. And so would it be, would it be appropriate for me to ask if a particular department had salary savings? Or is that a conversation you want me to have with you offline?
I'm not sure I would be able to answer it effectively. I mean, like, to be able to say exactly what their salary savings may, may have been this year.
I got you.
So if you have a, a specific one you would like us to look into, I'd be happy to do that. I'm just not sure I would be able to do that off, completely off the top of my head.
I got you. No problem. Mr. Herman, or maybe Jessica Corbett can speak to this. When we have actual employees that are at a point of they're going to be making too much money to get resources, whether it's housing vouchers or whether it's food stamps or whatever, what do we have within our lobbyist team to be able to go and see if those actual maximums can be raised? Because we're talking about, even with a family of, say, five children, they, the maximum that they can make, I don't think has been changed in years. And so I'm thinking part of our maybe advocacy as legislators is to see how do we advocate for a higher maximum for, you know, anything from food stamps to any housing vouchers or whatever. I'm just trying to, Commissioner Hall raised the point, the only, the problem that I see that we may not be doing is using the bully pit of lobbying for the maximums to be raised, whether it's at the state or federal level, if you follow what I'm asking. So have we done any studies? Do we have any relationships or resources? Because I would hate for someone to say, you know what, I, I don't really want you to pay me more money because the minute you pay me more money, my subsidies for childcare go out the window, my subsidies for housing go out the window. And so I'm thinking part of what we can do is to be advocates for that. So if you can speak to that, I really would appreciate it.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. I'd like to take a look at the list that Mr. Herman has. And there are a number of public benefit programs that are administered by, as you said, both the state and federal government, different agencies. That advocacy is complex. Those programs are many times statewide or generally statewide or national programs. But we could certainly look at that and bring that back to, add that to the legislative package if that's something that the board would like to do.
I'd appreciate that. I think it would, since we are trying to give a cost of living raise, I would hate for an employee to lose their benefits. But on the flip side of it, they need more money. And so what can we do as legislators to maybe have other organizations collectively say, you know what, we need the maximum raise for the housing voucher. We need the maximum raise for a household for heating. You know, a heating, you can only make so much money to get additional help for heating. And so just, in my mind, I'm just asking, because you all probably would have more insight than I would at that point as to who we would need. And Mr. Herman, I'm more than happy to, you know, work with you or give me some information on that.
Thank you, Commissioner. I, I think Jessica and the lobbyist team would be a great place to start with raising those thresholds. Because we, we did, when we did this several years ago, when we got to 32, we did look at the unintended consequences. And we also attempted to do that this year again. And we reached out, for example, to the SNAP program, but they, they indicated that they had so many different variables, number of individuals in households. And I like that they couldn't give us a definitive answer that this $36,000 or $38,000 would kick someone out automatically. So I, I think whatever we could do collaboratively to work with our partners on the state side or in the assembly, general assembly about raising the thresholds would be beneficial for our employees and particularly all employees within the county.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
One other question I have. Sharon, does anyone have the amount that the inmate welfare fund had at the end of 2022 or at the beginning of 2023?
We may have that information. I don't have it readily available. We, we may have it in the audit from, from an audit report. We can get it. I, I don't have it available, but we, we probably have it that we can provide.
Well, let me, let me tell you openly the reasoning behind that. If, in fact, there was something that was being paid through the inmate welfare fund that should have been, been paid with another fund, the unintended consequences or the increase in other areas, I would want to know about that. But the sheriff did tell me that there was mistakes, stuff that was supposed to be paid in other areas were paid incorrectly with that funding. So just to be transparent, I would like to know, is that going to be moved from some other part of the budget? If it was an accident, it was an accident. I have to take him for his word. He said it shouldn't have been paid with that, it should have been paid with something else. However, you know, when we're talking about accountability, that may be a hit that that department may have to take in certain areas. Or that may be something that we may have to flesh out as to what was paid with that inmate welfare fund that duly needed to be paid with another fund. So in my mind, it goes two ways, but I, I would openly ask if there was something that was paid for incorrectly per our sheriff's comments, that he either, one, return it or, two, not ask for it in this year's budget because if it was supposed to be paid for and it was paid for out of a fund that it shouldn't have been paid for, then at the end of the day, that is not our or the taxpayer's responsibility. So I would like some, and, and this is a conversation I'll have with him, but I'm only asking you all now because that fund has been renamed, I understand. You know, there's a certain procedure, but if there's something truly that he has a need for and it's being asked for and he had paid for it with that fund, I would like to know that. But if there's something also that was paid for with that fund that wouldn't have been paid for with any other fund, at the end of the day, none of the taxpayer citizens of Fulton County should be held liable for that. So I just want to put that out there. But I'll, I'll get with you, county manager and CFO, and just ask about the salary savings because I'm, I'm a little unclear on whether they had an opportunity to use their salary savings. And also, I, I will echo what Commissioner Arrington said. I would like to see the arts at a very minimum and Fulton Films at a very minimum stay at that funding level. I just feel in certain areas, the hit that we're going to take is, will not be worth it. And so I just want to put that out there. But I'll, I'll get with you all with specific questions for salary savings for those particular departments. Thank you.
Commissioner Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, all departments and agencies should be able to use their salary savings as they have always been able to do. Secondly, as Commissioner Arrington stated, the money has been sitting in non-agency. We've heard today that there's extra money in elections, and we know that we have underruns, and we address those things most definitely mid-year as far as the underruns are concerned. So we need to not wait to take this to the lobbyists, take this to the state and federal government as it relates to the wage for our Fulton County employees. We need to fund the new living wage at a higher amount for our Fulton County employees now. We all have experienced the increase in gasoline prices, housing prices, food, daycare. I did not know that daycare is like paying a house note. That is a travesty to a new parent, and I have one on my team. When I found out how much they pay in daycare now, I, I'm just glad my kids are grown. So we need to look at utilizing non-agency elections, underruns, and anything else that we can to go ahead and fund our Fulton County employees at a higher new living wage so that we can set the standard, period, statewide, go beyond being best in class because best in class is obviously not good enough. We shouldn't be putting people in a bad situation to take care of themselves and their families. And then I agree with many of the comments about the arts and culture funding, specifically contract for services. Because I've sat here at the, this meeting, the past BLC meetings, and listened to public comment from many of our residents and just taken note of what they have said time after time about they want to see us fund seniors' services, they want to see us fund veterans' services, they want to see us fund the arts, the youth, the homeless. And so at one of the previous meetings, I read to you from the memo that was provided to us from Hakim, our director of finance, through our county manager, Dick Anderson, our chief financial officer, Sharon Whitmore, to the Board of Commissioners, subject line, fiscal year 2024, budget enhancement. fiscal year 2024 budget enhancement operating request dated October 27, 2023. And it listed every single thing. It says titled 2023 BLC items added to the budget not funded in 2024. And for the contract for services for arts and culture, it says 1.7 million dollars. So if we're going to fund it at the levels of 2023, that means we have to put the 1.7 million dollars in the budget. And then they have an outcry for seniors, youth, homelessness, veterans. We have a new veterans grant. We need to make sure it's funded fully as it was in 2023. Our seniors specifically, Mr. Devon Barrington Ward spoke on the seniors today. We need to make sure that we do fund the rideshare program. That's your Uber and Lyft. And that we do not create a situation where our seniors cannot ride it as they have in the past. And this list goes on and on. I've read it before. I will not read it again. You can reference the meeting where I actually read it. But there are plenty of items on here that were cut in community development, youth and homeless. We've heard many people come up here and say we need to address homelessness at the same levels of 2023. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Arrington, for bringing to light the need for some of these additional things that ORCA paid for. The training that you spoke of that's necessary to ensure that our sheriffs are completely trained adequately, guess what? The total's only forty-nine thousand dollars. Not forty-nine million, just forty-nine thousand dollars. And let's move on to the body worn cameras. That's on here as well. It says federal grant match. Thank you for bringing that up. But I also want to point out that the Solicitor General has, needs a supplemental VOCA grant funding to cover personnel and operational expenses. The Solicitor General needs just 248,000 dollars to supplement those expenses. And then let's speak on, you've already talked about the district attorney, but don't forget the marshal. The marshals were literally on the news speaking about their needs. There's an overtime budget request from the marshal to manage the current high volume of writs. So I think that there are some things that we still need to work out before we come to the January 24 meeting and pass a budget. Thank you.
Christopher Barrett?
Just, I have a clarifying question about those 22 positions that the DA has brought up, and thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Arrington. Again, I had the same conversation with her that some others did, that it was my understanding, as Commissioner Arrington said, that there were 22 positions, whether offers were out or they were already filled, I don't know, but that at least eighteen of them were in the process of being filled or already filled. And four, I think, I think the other four, she said, offers were out, but I could be wrong about that. Regardless, there are people, I think, at least in eighteen of those 22 currently. And so are those still in her budget for next year or are those positions gone from her budget?
Commissioner, we just checked the DA's budget to see how many positions that are currently vacant. It's about fifteen of them that are vacant right now. We have fifteen vacant positions that I'm looking at.
What is, how many positions is 4% of her total? Because her rate is always about 96% full, correct? In terms of, her vacancies are the smallest of most of the other Justice Partners, I think.
Last year, I believe, no, she spent about 93% of her budget last year. So you have the position count? I think she has about 200 and something positions. Two hundred and sixty-nine positions she has. So fifteen of those positions are currently vacant.
So they're now removed from her budget for 2024?
They are not removed. They are not removed. They are in her budget. She can fill them. They just need to manage to the budget.
And so she has, so she has 269, including 15 vacant right now. And how many did she have in 2023 total?
It would be the same because we didn't take any, I mean, did we take positions?
Yeah, what's the attrition factor and all that then? I'm confused about that then.
So let me try to explain it clear. Let's say you had 100 positions and you normally run 10 vacant, which is some are filled, some are unfilled, they keep a treading and being filled all across the course of the year. This exercise is designed to take the value, not the position, but the value of those 10 positions and reduce it by 25% or so. In other words, or 33, I forgot what the number is. But you take the salary dollars for those positions that almost consistently are vacant, not the precise position, but the average, reduce it. And what that does then is when you come to the end of the year, the salary savings, which otherwise would have accrued, have now been used upfront to try to balance the budget. It does not take away any of the positions because generally speaking, they're going to be filled and vacated as they go across the course of the year. So to some degree, our desire to be precise has gotten in the way of just what would have been a simple exercise, which is just to reduce salary expenses by some percent, recognizing that there will always be vacant as you go across the course of the year.
Yeah, I mean, I get what you're saying. I appreciate the explanation, Mr. County Manager. I think the only sort of, this is not the right word, but I'm going to use it, troubling part of that is that if we did not do it that way, they would have had higher salary savings, which they were using for other things that we didn't fund. So they, you know, may still be able to use their salary savings, but they're going to have less of that because we're taking some of it upfront, correct? Yeah. So then maybe things that they were able to pay for out of their budgets because there was that salary savings that they will not now be able to cover. And so I think we just need to be looking at, you know, very critically, and I know you all do, about any things that they were meeting or paying for that weren't specifically budgeted for in the past and they were using that money for. How critical are those things? You know, and I'm not suggesting that they shouldn't also be, you know, frugal in all those things, but I just want to make sure that something critical doesn't remain uncovered, so to speak. The only other thing I just wanted to jump in since we're talking about, I think everybody, you know, it's only my second year here doing budget and only Commissioner Thorne and I only got half the process last year. So this is our first time doing the full thing. So I wasn't really sure when everybody was going to start sort of pitching in with what they thought should be in here additional. But I do think it makes sense to make sure that the things I see have at least been delivered to you prior to the final discussion in a couple of weeks. So, you know, I think the way I see it, to cover some additional help for the marshal based on looking at what's in the tranches and the conversation I've had with her, and I think at least 1.1 million needs to be going to the marshal. You know, I really strongly believe, and I think we all know, that healthcare in Fulton County has, you know, some of the, the lack that we have in the south part of the county in particular hasn't changed just because the hospitals didn't close this year and they're not in the news right now. We have not really fully addressed that problem. And so I do think it's important that we do a $5 million healthcare reserve again this year and proceed with our efforts that the chairman worked out with the Morehouse folks and all of that to sort of continue down that road and continue to make progress on that. Certainly, that's a Jessica thing as well, just because Medicaid expansion obviously would help a great deal in saving us a significant amount of money in terms of what we're paying to Grady that might be able to address a lot of our needs in the county. So I know we're already focused on that for the legislative agenda, but thought it worth mentioning here. I also think we should consider the 9 million for the ORCA positions through the end of the year. And, you know, obviously, we're still going to have a lot of challenges when it comes to 2025 if all the ORCA positions end at the end of the year, but at least it would get us through this calendar year. And then given what my colleagues have brought up around some of the issues for the DA's office, the sheriff's office, and some of the other requests for the Justice Department, I think there's a few small things still left for some of them that may or may not be critical, that I see somewhere between five and 10 million that in the justice tranche that probably needs to be looked at. And that's with that, I feel like I do need to do some further study and have some additional conversations on that front. But, oh, and in the arts too, I'll mention that just at a glance in the third tranche, I believe it is, which lists out all the community things, I think the, oh, I want to just make something clear to address Commissioner Hall's comments about veterans and ask this just for confirmation, Ms. Whitmore or Mr. Anderson, that we did go ahead already and include the 1 million for veterans in the current budget, correct? Okay. So that tranche, I believe, was about 8.9 million, including the veterans. So if you take that million out, it's now at about 7.9 million. And just again, at my first glance through it, there's at least about 3.5 that I think we need to look seriously at considering in this year's budget. So back of the napkin math, you know, I think there's somewhere in the neighborhood of 30 million additional dollars we need to look at spending. And I recognize that that's not going to fit into the current model. And so, you know, I don't know how you all want to address that, where money can be pulled from. I mean, the magical non-agency perhaps, I don't know. But on that front, Sharon, just one other question. I did notice on the, on the general fund detail sheet, page 26 in the current book, the green cover book, there is non-agency listed out and broken into some categories. But we don't ever, we don't see the actuals for that, only the budgeted amount. Is there a reason for that?
For the actual amounts by the individual categories? Is that what you're, because we have the actual for non-agency as a whole.
Correct, by category.
By the categories. No, I mean, I guess we could, we could go back in and include the actuals from the previous year. We were just trying to, because it's such a large amount, we were just trying to show it into its broad, you know, broad use categories.
No, I think it would be helpful to see the breakdown for the actuals too, just so we, you know, understand kind of the full picture of what's happening.
Yeah.
That's all I had.
Okay. Christopher Arrington?
My back of the napkin math, just heard four commissioners talk about restoring arts funding for 2023. So I want to make sure that that's clear and for Fulton Films. And so I think the sheriff has outlined some of these things, 275,000 dollars. I evac, smoke, fire hoods, fire response, turnout gear. I mean, you know, I don't know how we not provide that type of stuff. I mean, again, these aren't just X's and O's. Anybody working at the jail is working in a life or death situation. It's life safety 24 hours a day, seven days a week at the jail. So please keep that in mind as you hopefully come back and give us something based off, another, an updated budget based off of the input that you've gotten today. Certainly, I agree that the marshals need more money and need more resources. And, you know, all of our Justice Partners, we need to find this ORCA money. And Commissioner Barrett, she can't tell you where the eggs are hidden. You got to go find them yourself. But no, seriously, hopefully, yeah, we can get an updated budget that will include some of these other items, other items. Prison Rape Elimination Act, you know, 19,000 to comply with that, right? I think we got to comply with that. We got to find that money, right? There's no way around it. So and some of these other things that are in there, again, I think from, from my perspective, if, if they don't have updated radios and communication software at the jail and somebody calls for help, it's like, then it's another life safety issue. And so I think we have to think of these things just a little bit differently, look a little beyond the dollars and cents, the zeros and the ones, the binary numbers, and look at what's behind it and look at the people behind it, you know, when making some of these decisions. So, you know, I'll leave it there, you know, it looks like they asked for some software that helps with the apprehension of violent offenders, human traffickers, sex offenders, you know. I don't know how we go against that. I don't know how we not find money for some of those things. So I'll leave it there, but hopefully we can get a, another modified budget, again, that reflects the concerns and the priorities as communicated by this board today. And I would agree with Commissioner Barrett, maybe it's another 30 million or so. And I do know last year, we did assume a different millage rate for purposes of the budget. And so maybe that is another option for getting where we need to get for purposes of adopting a budget. So, but I think we need to just make sure that we take care of those. You know, some of this is just bare necessities. I mean, we want the jail population to go down. Either we want the jail population to go down or we don't. If we do, then we've got to support ORCA. Either we want evictions to happen faster than six to nine months or we don't. If we do, we've got to support the marshal's office. I mean, it's just, it's just real simple. So I'll stop there.
Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Commissioner Arrington. You made me think about a couple of things. The, I have not received a response from the County Manager or the Chief Financial Officer on the two youth conferences that I've hosted for the past six years. One of them actually started working on with Commissioner Garner before I was elected. $150,000 for two youth conferences. I already have schools who are ready and waiting for the March youth being prepared to sign their students up and their students actually look forward to it. So that, is that in here? Or if not, I'm requesting that it be put in there because my schools are looking forward to them again this year. And then on here, it caught my attention when Commissioner Arrington was reiterating and Commissioner Barrett, there were things on here like youth and homelessness, youth programs, that an extra 1 million was provided. We have so many issues right now with the youth and homeless. I don't know if everyone saw the media where the bridge caught on fire just recently from the homeless living under the bridges and the city is removing all of them from the bridges and they are working on legislation to not have people living under the bridges because of the implications of what can happen. That could be a detriment to the bridges and to those who are living under there. So we need to, as a county, be ready and able to address the needs of those people. They've been living under those bridges for as long as I can remember and I've been here over 30 years. But the county is supposed to be mandated by the state to provide health and human services. That is inclusive of behavioral health, mental health, homelessness services, housing. That is inclusive of behavioral health, mental health, homelessness services, housing, and so much more that those individuals who live under those bridges need it, and they need them. So I'd like to see where our county manager and team are looking at how to address the fact that these people are being removed from the bridges. Well, where are they going? Who's assisting them? We also fund so many nonprofit organizations that provide those types of services. What are our partners doing? What are we doing in relation to the partners to address this situation? So can anyone speak to, have you even started to look at the situation? Because watching the news, it was just horrifying.
Thank you for that comment, Commissioner Hall. One of the challenges that we continue to face is how we, from a fiscal perspective, address needs in the city and the county. And so I know that Stan Wilson, and what I mean by that is, as you are aware, our homeless funding is constrained by geographic boundaries. And so the city has funding for any homeless support services that are geographically located in the city, and the county is responsible for all other homeless services. We do have a good relationship with the coordinating group out of the city of Atlanta. And so I will certainly speak with our director of community development to find out what specifically is being done in relationship to that displacement of those individuals under the bridge. But I know that we are continuing to ensure that the funding that we receive for county-related services, that it's getting to the nonprofits that need it. And we certainly will look at how we can continue to coordinate even better in 2024.
Thank you, and you're absolutely correct. I am familiar with the fact that, in just layman's terms, that we cannot double dip because both the county and the city are receiving the federal funding from HUD, and you can't use both sides of government's funding. But however, that is why I've consistently requested budget enhancements in those areas. Because when we pull from our general fund and we utilize that money in those areas of homelessness and youth and whatever else, that general fund money allows us to actually fund those needs beyond the HUD funding. So, thank you.
All right, it's quarter till two. I'll entertain a motion to recess for lunch and executive session, issues of real estate litigation and personnel. All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Barrett, seconded by Vice Chair Abdu Rockman.
Where's? All right, without objection, we will resume the regular order of business. Madam Clerk, items from executive session.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there a motion to approve the requests for representation in items one, two, and three of the executive session agenda?
We have a motion to approve by Vice Chair Abdu Rockman, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Let's vote.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, five yeas, zero nays.
Is there a motion to adopt the recommendation and decision from the hearing conducted by the Housing Authority of Fulton County on July 20th, 2023, and to remove Commissioner Rani Shakir from the commission?
Motion to approve by Vice Chair Abdu Rockman, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Please vote.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, four yeas, one nay.
Is there a motion to approve the transfer of property located at 2925 Lakewood Drive from the county to Atlanta Public Schools?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Vice Chair Abdu Rockman. Please vote.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays.
And finally, is there a motion to transfer property to the City of Sandy Springs for a roadway sidewalk improvement project around the Sandy Springs Library, consisting of an easement and, excuse me, consisting of a right-of-way and a temporary construction easement for this project?
All right, favorable motion by Commissioner Barrett, seconded by Commissioner Thorne. Please vote.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays.
No further items from executive session.
Thank you, Madam County Attorney. Madam Clerk, please continue.
Back on page six, 240014, Real Estate and Asset Management, request approval of the lower's responsible bidder in an amount not to exceed $6 million to provide standby repair, maintenance, construction services.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Vice Chair Abdu Rockman. Please vote.
And the vote is open?
Recording in progress.
And the motion passes, five yeas, zero nays. 240016, Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities, request approval to amending existing contract in amount not to exceed $11,377,838 for the expansion of behavioral health services.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, and seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Please vote. Is it working? All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Hall. Those in favor say aye, opposed no, it's approved. Next.
On page seven, 230961.
Boy, that was an $11 million item. I don't think we can do that like that. There was, there was no actual vote.
And what's on the screen says, "Quick index item." So, no.
There, no, no one responded, no one had the opportunity to respond in the affirmative or in the negative, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we will, all right, no one said no. All right, a motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Hall. Any questions, any discussion? All right, those in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion, the machine is open.
Quick index?
It looked like it changed items or something. It went, it originally had the original item listed and then somehow got to that.
Okay, is it working now or not working? All right, we're gonna take a voice vote. All right, Commissioner Thorne? Yes. Vice Chair? Mr. Barrett? I vote yes. Commissioner Hall? Commissioner Arrington?
Yes.
Yes.
Zero nays.
Continue.
On page seven, under Justice and Safety, 230961, Sheriff, request approval to reprogram the use of unspent emergency capital funding to utilize $595,032.45 for the staff toilet upgrades at the South and next jail.
All right, it's working now, correct? All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Vice Chair Abdu Rockman. Please vote.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, five yeas, zero nays.
Next item.
Commissioners' action items, 230915, request approval of a resolution to dissolve the Housing Authority of Fulton County and for other purposes, sponsored by Commissioner Arrington.
Based on the action that just occurred, I would ask that this be removed.
So noted.
I object to it being removed. He can, that's all right. He has a right to do so.
Okay, 230964, request approval of a resolution directing an, an external review of the Board of Ethics and for other purposes, sponsored by Commissioner Arrington.
Is there a motion?
Oh yeah, I'm, I'm gonna make the motion, you know, I, I stood here at the beginning of this meeting, and we all did, we took a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and for liberty and justice for which it stands. What is occurring is not liberty and is not justice. They have violated all of their own rules, they have violated the Georgia Open Meetings Act, they have violated the Georgia Open Records Act, they have violated the Georgia Constitution, they have violated the United States Constitution. The matter was dismissed on March 16th, 2021, and anybody that does a Google search will see that Daryl Russell from Fox Five put out an article saying that it was dismissed. In fact, the, the proof that it was dismissed was that the complainant, Misha Maynor, then sent a letter to the Board of Ethics in Fulton County saying she was going to sue us, and she did in fact sue us. There would not have been any reason for her to sue the Board of Ethics if they had not dismissed the matter. Everything that they've done needs to be evaluated, we need an audit of everything that they've done over the last 10 years. They are incompetent, they are unethical, and their actions are illegal. They need to be removed. If, if I, if someone wants to judge my ethics, because we, we're talking, we need to adopt hearing officers as requested by the county attorney, county attorney, I will stand in front of any hearing officer or anyone other than these unethical and illegal people. These people must go, we need an audit of everything that they've done because they are violating their own rules, they're violating every rule around the world, and it is insane that we would allow them to stay and not take any action. And frankly, it's going to set the county up for further liability. I've had to sue them as a result of the fact that they're, are trying to continue a complaint that they dismissed on March 16th, 2021. Not only are we gonna have to pay for their defense, but y'all gonna have to pay for the money I collect against them for violating all my rules, nip it for violating all of the Fulton County Code of Ethics, for violating all of my rights, not my rules, for violating all of my rights, and not to mention my client's rights, because after I win my lawsuit, my client's gonna file a lawsuit against them, because everything that they did was wrong. They have not done one thing right. And if they do it to me, they'll do it to you, and if they've done it to me, they've probably done it in the past too. They have exceeded their authority, they have no, they have, they have no defense. I don't even understand what this is about. This is the craziest thing in the history of the world. You have a group comprised of mostly lawyers and a judge that want to attempt to violate the attorney-client privilege, and they wanna violate the Fulton County Code of Ethics, the Georgia Open Meetings Act, the Georgia Open Records Act, the Georgia Constitution, and the United States Constitution to do so, and none of you will stand up and call them out on what they're doing and say that is wrong? Shame on you.
Commissioner Hall?
I'm gonna ask the same question that I asked at the last meeting to our county attorney, in that, what is, what have you seen as it relates to this Ethics Board and the things that Commissioner Arrington has just raised? So, in the interest of time, I will say that everything that is contained in the resolutions that Commissioner Arrington has put forward in terms of citing irregularities or inconsistencies and instances of not following their own rules and regulations, I can confirm that we have observed in my office as we have been following these cases. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Barrett?
Madam County Attorney, I believe that we, when this came up last time, I asked if anyone had, I think, you know, accepting that there were irregularities and rules not followed and things of that nature, that, you know, had, had they been asked as a, as a body what they were gonna do to change their policies and procedures and rectify the situation if they were to continue on and this were not to pass?
So, I have not had communications with anyone on the Board of Ethics about that. I think the, the legal remedy that is typically provided, traditionally provided, is to exercise one's appeal rights, but I think that this legislation is seeking to address it on a, on a more comprehensive level and not just limited to the instances that have occurred in these particular cases.
Right, but what I mean is, overall, they have done some things, as you acknowledge, that are sort of not the procedure, not what they should be doing, and if that, I mean, I would, I don't know if they've done that in other cases or not, it sounds like you don't either. But the bigger question is, if it at least happened in this case, there are some guardrails that are clearly not there in terms of how they're operating, so I'm, I don't know if you are the right people to ask, to reach out to them and ask what their remedy is for these inconsistencies, or if that's something that needs to be done in a different way.
So, at one point, it was requested that we reach out to them, so we, we did get back, for example, timelines and certain communications, but none of those communications consisted of, and necessarily a plan forward. That was not the nature of the information I received back.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Arrington?
So, I wanna be, be real clear, this specific agenda item is about an audit and external review to determine who else's rights have they violated. This is to determine on previous orders, who else's constitutional rights? How many times have they violated the Fulton County Ethics Code? This specific one is an external review, an audit of their past decisions and past actions. That is what this is, and, I mean, it is, it is just a shame that we have people down here that would do this, even, even if they wanted Commissioner Barrett to propose some type of plan forward or whatever, the conflict is irrevocable. They filed a lawsuit against me. It's irrevocable. No judge can sit in judgment of someone and go file a lawsuit against one of the parties that they're sitting in judgment in front of. It's not allowed. It can't happen. Now, what they were supposed to do was allow to make a ruling and allow one of the parties to appeal to the Superior Court. The statute, the Code of Ethics also allows them the opportunity, what they could have done, they could have started, they could have said, okay, well, March 16th, we finalized that complaint, we found no probable cause. They could have started a new complaint, they could have started a new complaint, they had the power on their own to start a new complaint, but they would have had to have another probable cause hearing within 60 days. They would have had to provide notice that there was a new complaint, right? They didn't do any of those things. They're not following the law, they're not following the Fulton County Code of Ethics, they're violating constitutional rights. Anytime you don't give someone notice, you are violating their constitutional rights. The Fifth Amendment and the Fourteenth Amendment require due process of law, and the idea that we have a group mostly comprised of lawyers and a former judge being advised by another lawyer, and they can't follow the rules? The rule is real simple, 2-81F. If a majority of the board finds that there is no probable cause, the complaint shall be dismissed or investigation terminated. That occurred on March 16th, 2021. Today is January 10th, 2024. This complaint was filed on November 9th of 2020, so on November 10th of 2023 was the start of the fourth year. This board has exceeded their authority, they have violated, let me ask, let me ask some questions, Madam County Attorney, has the board violated the Fulton County Code of Ethics? Has the Board of Ethics violated the Fulton County Code of Ethics?
Yes, we have observed instances where they have not followed the Code of Ethics.
Has the Board of Ethics violated the Georgia Open Meetings Act?
Yes, we, we have observed instances that I would consider to be a violation of the Open Meetings Act.
Has the Board of Ethics violated the Georgia Open Records Act?
I don't have direct knowledge of it, but from reading through the pleadings, it appears they have not complied with the Open Records Act.
Have they failed to provide notice? Has the Board of Ethics failed to provide the proper notice as outlined in the Fulton County Code of Ethics?
Yes.
Is the failure to provide notice a violation a violation of constitutional rights?
It does not provide due process if the notice is defective.
Okay, so let me ask again. Is the failure to provide notice a violation of due process of law?
Yes, it can be.
And if they violate due process of law, does that violate the Georgia Constitution and the United States Constitution?
Yes, it can constitute those violations as well.
I rest my case.
All right, Commissioner Thorne.
Commissioner Arrington, you said that the complaint shall be dismissed. Do you want to interpret shall, the word shall?
The word shall is compulsory. The issue, when we spoke, the issue that you're trying to conflate this with is the issue regarding the Board of Elections. And in that issue, the question is, it says the Board of Commissioners shall appoint. This is not about who does what. This is about the complaint. The complaint, the complaint that was filed against me shall be dismissed because the majority of the members of the Board of Ethics determined on March 16, 2021, after a probable cause hearing and hearing from both sides, that probable cause did not exist. The complaint shall be dismissed or investigation terminated. What they have done is the exact opposite. They have not terminated the investigation, and they have not dismissed the complaint. And that is the problem. If anybody in here could judge me, I don't care. You can go get anyone you want to judge me on this complaint. But it's already been dismissed. And two dash eight one I says, if it has been dismissed, that decision shall be final. So, the complaint shall be dismissed. The word shall is compulsory, unlike the word may or the word will, right? Shall, the complaint shall be dismissed.
Anything else, Mr. Thorne?
Do we have other boards that don't follow the rules, don't follow Open Records Meetings Act? And what are the ramifications if a board fails to do that? What have we done in the past?
During my tenure, I'm not aware that that has come to the board's attention for any other board.
For instance, the Board of Elections won't post their meeting minutes for six months, eight months. I mean, it's ridiculous. And when it says that you need to post them within X amount of days, yet we don't do anything there. So, that's what my hesitation. When you say an external review, the Board of Ethics, what's the difference between a review and an audit? Is it because there's no finances or?
Yeah, just, I was assuming review instead of audit because there are no finances. My point is someone to look and determine if they have been complying with the rules. And, you know, I can guarantee you that they haven't because I've seen 97 times that they haven't complied with the rules in my one case. 97 times in one case. They haven't complied with the rules. So, why would they ever comply with them? Where is the proof that they have ever complied with them? The difference between this and the Board of Elections is there is a specific rule that says what shall happen if there is, not because there's a, not because they violate the Georgia Meeting, Open Meetings Act, not because they violate the Georgia Open Records Act, not because they didn't provide due process, not because they violated the Georgia Constitution, not because they violated the United States Constitution. It says because they determined that there was no probable cause, the complaint shall be dismissed. And since they won't dismiss it, we should audit everything they've done for the last 10 years because if they are violating people's rights, if they will violate one of my rights, one of the commissioners' rights, what do you think they're doing to an average employee? How do you think they would treat them? They're going to, so violate the, so it's okay. They can violate employees' rights, but they can't violate commissioners' rights? They haven't done anything right. They've proven that they don't have the capability or the intelligence or the competence to do anything right pursuant to the Fulton County Code of Ethics. They should be ashamed. They should run away and hide in shame because they can't, they're completely incompetent. Completely incompetent, all of them.
All right, Commissioner Thorne, you still have the floor. You done?
Yeah, I just have to say, I think the pressure by having a commissioner involved in a case puts an undue pressure on a board. I know if I was on that board, it would convolute things navigating between a commissioner and a normal employee. We do have a new appointee on the board. You know, people will switch out. I think the value of having an ethics board is necessary instead of someone coming for a hearing before an individual. But that's just my opinion from what I know. But I do, Commissioner Arrington, you pointed out some excellent points, and I do see where they didn't follow the law. I think there's, there was somewhat of some intimidation, not that you necessarily initiated, but they just felt intimidation in acting since you were a sitting commissioner. So, I just wanted to bring that forward. But I do think you have some very valid points.
Commissioner Arrington, you want to be heard again?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Thorne. The only intimidation that they got was from Misha Mayner, who intimidated them by sending a letter telling them she was going to sue them. And they responded to that letter. So, they were scared of being sued by her. Well, now they're actually being sued by me, and they have no defense. I said quietly, I haven't said anything about any of this for the last three years. It wasn't until after they sent a letter November 1 of 2023 on a complaint that should have been dismissed on March 16 of 2021. I mean, what justification is there? I mean, no one disputes that they determined that there was no probable cause that day. Darryl Russell, Fox 5, did a report. The lady sent a letter, the lady sent an antelitum notice saying she was going to sue them, Fulton County, me, and Fonny Willis because of this. And in fact, she did. She filed an ethics complaint against me. She filed a bar complaint against me. And she filed a federal RICO lawsuit against me. The ethics complaint was dismissed on March 16, 2021, when they determined there was no probable cause. The bar complaint was dismissed, and the federal RICO lawsuit was also dismissed. All I'm saying is, these people are not operating within the rules. I don't mind being judged, but you got to play by, everybody has to play by the same rules. If you want somebody else to hear this, if you want another hearing officer or another board to hear it, I'm glad to have them hear it. In fact, that's why I filed a lawsuit. A judge is about to hear it. But we need a review of their actions, of their past actions, to make sure that they haven't violated anyone else's constitutional rights.
Commissioner Barrett.
Madam County Attorney, what would be, if we were to go forward with this, what would the cost of an external review be?
We could get you an estimate, but given that the timeframe is rather expansive, I would anticipate a significant cost if we did it through outside counsel.
Like ballpark?
I would have to look for previous investigations and audits to see if we could find anything comparable or extrapolate from what we have.
My concern is that we would spend a lot of money doing this review, and I don't know that the results of it would, certainly wouldn't change your mind one way or the other, right? Let's say it came back, and this was the only case in which they did these things. Is it going to change your mind?
Unfortunately, the conflict is irrevocable.
Right, so it was the point of doing a multi-year review if that isn't going to change your mind.
To prove how far off-kilter they are, to show their level of incompetence to the people of Fulton County.
My take, Commissioner Arrington, is that they did wrong in this scenario. Whether they did wrong before isn't really the issue. They did wrong. They did some wrong things as it relates to your case. So, my question sort of ongoing is, what do we do with a sitting board? And I think this gets to Commissioner Thorne's question. And I think, you know, I wouldn't use the Board of Registration and Elections as an example, but I know we have other boards that don't follow open meetings the way they should or don't post their minutes the way they should and things like that. So, what recourse do we have as a body to address boards, commissions, task forces, authorities, whatever they are, that we have constituted that, so not ones that are created by the state, but ones that we have constituted that don't meet their obligations or break rules? Because whatever those, whatever that course of action is, to me, is what we should be pursuing here.
If I may, I recommended a compliance officer, someone from the county attorney's office to make sure that this board in particular, but we could apply it to all boards, make sure that the boards are complying. The problem is, you've got volunteers on these boards. And so, there's no one there to make sure that they comply with the rules. So, we have to provide the compliance officers to ensure that they comply with the rules.
So, to piggyback on that, I know historically, to some boards and authorities are written in such a way that our office provides legal support. In this particular instance, I believe in an attempt to keep them independent. The Board of Ethics was given the ability to obtain its own legal counsel, independent of my office, which is why we were unable to ascertain the history of them hiring their current counsel because it was not done through the county attorney's office. So, I know that you had brought up this question before, and our office is currently working on compiling kind of a comprehensive view of our boards and authorities and what kind of oversight this body has over them if they are not complying with the rules that apply to them. That is not currently complete. But what I will say is that the, in general, if this body has created the board or authority, it will typically have the authority to modify any terms and conditions. So, to the extent that the board is interested in doing a complete overview of what our boards and authorities are authorized to do, how people are appointed to the boards and authorities, how they can be removed, what consequences are provided for if they deviate from their mandate. That is something that we are working on and will provide a recommendation as to what your options are as a board.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Abdu Rockman.
Call the question.
All right, question has been called. Let's vote on the call of the question.
Okay, Commissioner. And the vote is open on call the question. And the motion passes, four yeas, zero nays.
All right, on the motion that's on the floor.
The vote is open on the motion to approve. And the motion fails, two yeas, four nays.
Next item.
Twenty-three, zero-nine-six-five, request approval of resolution to revoke every action taken by the Fulton County Board of Ethics from January 1, 2014, through December 20, 2023, and for other purposes, sponsored by Commissioner Arrington.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Arrington. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Hall. Commissioner Hall, you have the floor.
Thank you. Now, I'll say what I was about to say before I call the question. It is our responsibility to ensure that no employee's rights have been violated, period. And so, therefore, we need to do everything in our power to ensure that there is no board, no one who has violated the rights of our employees. Thank you.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to approve. Let's vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion fails, two yeas, four nays.
Next item.
Twenty-three, zero-nine-six-six, request approval of an ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Article 2, Division 2 of the Fulton County Code to disband the Board of Ethics and to replace it with a slate of ethics hearing officers and for other purposes, sponsored by Commissioner Arrington.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Arrington. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Hall. Commissioner Arrington, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are people that have tried to imply that I am trying to avoid being judged by this board. I'm willing to be judged by any replacement board or by any hearings officer. This has nothing to do with, this has nothing to do with the matter at hand. This has to do with them not following the process. This has to do with them not following their own laws. And it's really a shame that people will sit up here and vote no and not hold these people responsible. It's really disappointing, and it's a shame. But, you know, c'est la vie, right? The court will make a ruling, right? And then this body will have to pay the money.
Vice Chair Abdu Rockman.
Call the question.
All right, question has been called. Let's vote on the call of the question.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. A call of the question, doesn't it require a majority? A supermajority? It's not just a simple majority.
No discussion on this. We need a call of the question.
I made a point of order.
Just a minute, we need a second, which I'll second. Now, let's vote on the call of the question.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. A supermajority is required on a call of the question.
That's not correct. Let's vote.
The vote is open.
Madam County Attorney, can you make a ruling?
Vote's been taken. Madam Clerk.
And the motion passes, four yeas, zero nays.
All right, next item. Yeah, on the, the motion that's on the floor, let's vote.
Motion to approve, vote is open. And the motion fails, two yeas, four nays.
Next item.
Twenty-four, zero-zero-one-seven, request approval of resolution by the Fulton County Board of Commissioners and observance of the 95th birthday of the Reverend Dr. Martha Luther King Jr., sponsored by Commissioner Abdul-Rawkman.
All right, the motion is to approve by Vice Chair Abdu Rockman, seconded by Commissioner Thorne. Commissioner Hall.
Madam County Attorney, do you need a major, supermajority to pass call the question?
I'm not aware of that requirement, but we are double-checking right now.
Double-checking, thank you.
And we'll let you know if that is the case.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays.
All right, anything else?
No further items.
All right, no other matters have come before us today. We are adjourned.